For the 4:30 PM closed session, adjourned regular meeting of the City Council, could I get a roll call, please?
Yes, Councilmember Waller.
Present.
Councilmember Castle.
Here.
Councilmember Keller Jedovic is currently absent. Councilmember Obagi.
Here.
Councilmember Barron.
Here.
Mayor Light.
Here. Do we have any blue folder items for the closed session?
None for closed session.
Okay, thank you. Is there's nobody in the audience, anyone online to make public comments on closed session items and non-agenda items?
No attendees on Zoom and there are no ecomments.
Okay, could you read off what we'll be discussing during closed session?
Yes, as authorized by the government code, as listed on the published agenda, the following items will be discussed in closed session. Items F1 through F12 under the title Conference or Legal Counsel Existing Litigation. Item F1, the name of the case is Volovski Svetlana versus City Redondo Beach. Does 1 through 10, case number 24TRCV03834. For F2, the name of the case is Mesk Gary versus Slater Waterproofing, Inc., City Redondo Beach. Does 1 through 50, case number CIVRS2501454. Item F3, the name of the case is City Redondo Beach at L versus California State Water Resources Control Board. Case number 20STCP03193. Item F4, the name of the case is in regards to 9300 Wilshire LLC. Bankruptcy CD Cal case number 223-BK-10918-ER. Rap 5, the name of the case is 9300 Wilshire LLC versus City Redondo Beach, City Council of the City Redondo Beach, City Redondo Beach Department of Community Development and does 1 through 100 inclusive, case number 23STCP02189. Rap 6, the name of the case is in regards to 9300 Wilshire LLC. 9300 Wilshire LLC at L versus AES Redondo Beach LLC. Bankruptcy CD Cal case number 223-AP-01163-ER. Item F7, the name of the case is Yes in My Backyard, a California nonprofit corporation, Sandra Trausen Individual versus City Redondo Beach, City Council of the City Redondo Beach, City Redondo Beach Department of Community Development and does 1 through 25 inclusive, case number 23TRCP00325. Rap 8, the name of the case is New Commune DTLA LLC versus City Redondo Beach, City Council of the City Redondo Beach and does 1 through 100 inclusive, case number 23STCV10146. Rap 9, the name of the case is New Commune DTLA LLC and Leonid Pilsenikov versus City Redondo Beach and City Council of the City Redondo Beach, case number 22TRCP00203. Rap 10, the name of the case is New Commune DTLA LLC versus City Redondo Beach, City Council of the City Redondo Beach, City Redondo Beach Department of Community Development at L. Case number 23STCP00426. Rap 11, the name of the case is AES Southland Development LLC and AES Redondo Beach LLC versus California Coastal Commission, case number BS157789. And for item F12, the name of the case is JAMS Arbitration Case Reference Number F2, um, excuse me, 5220006179, Harry Stubert at L versus Redondo Beach Police Department and City Redondo Beach. Thank you.
Thank you, well done. Um, City Manager Witczanski, who will be speaking to these items in closed session?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. For all items, myself, City Attorney Joy Ford and Assistant City Attorney Cheryl Park. For items F1 and F2, we will be joined by Diane Strickfatt, our Human Resources Manager, or Director. Uh, for items F3 through F11, we will be joined by outside legal counsel John Wellner and Abby O'Brien. And then for item F12, we will have Police Chief Joe Hoffman and outside counsel Joshua Dale.
Okay, thank you. Uh, could I get a motion to recess to closed session?
So moved. Second?
Okay, we have a motion to second, all four.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Okay, we will be back on or about 6 PM to disclose anything from the closed session and to start the open session of the City Council. Thank you very much.
Open session, could I get a roll call please?
Councilmember Waller.
Present.
Councilmember Castle.
Here.
Councilmember Kalu Jetevich.
Here.
Councilmember Obaji.
Here.
Councilmember Barrett.
Here.
Mayor Light.
Here. Okay, City Manager Witschansky, anything to report from closed session?
Yes, Mayor, this evening, two items to report on. For the case listed under item F1, the council unanimously authorized the city attorney to defend the city in the matter. And then for the case listed under item F2, same result. Council unanimously authorized the city attorney to defend the city in that proceeding.
Okay, thank you. Could I get a motion to adjourn to open to our regular meeting?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, motion to second, all four?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, I now call the regular council meeting to order. May I have a roll call please?
Councilmember Waller.
Present.
Councilmember Castle.
Here.
Councilmember Kalu Jetevich.
Here.
Councilmember Obaji.
Here.
Councilmember Barrett.
Here.
Mayor Light.
Here. If we have any veterans or active duty military in the audience, please stand to be recognized for your service. I guess I'll stand again.[1785.62][1785.62](APPLAUSE). Okay, now let us all stand for the salute to the flag and remain standing for a moment of silence. I'd like to call up Sophia, who will lead us on the pledge. So Sophia, the floor is all yours. which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And please remain standing for a moment of silent invocation. Okay, please be seated. Sophia, thank you for leading us. Come on up and get a picture with the council. Well done.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you.
Great job.
Thank you.
Three, two, one, one more. Three, two, one.
You want to come closer?
Yeah, you can come up closer.
Family, come on.
Thank you so much.
Funny faces.
Thank you, Sophia.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, now we're going down to item D, presentations, proclamations, announcements, and AB 1, 2, 3, 4, travel expense reports. I do have some presentations and proclamations tonight, so let me start with that.
Do you want to do mine first?
Pardon? Yeah, go ahead. Oh, yeah, you have a swearing in. Go ahead.
Okay. Hello, I'm Eleanor Mazzano, the city clerk for Redondo Beach.
I'm going to minister the oath for the new senior deputy city prosecutor, Stephanie Johnson. So have you come up?
I'm going to give you the mic, then you're going to repeat after me what you're writing. I state your name.
I, Stephanie Johnson.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support, defend.
That I will support and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies.
Against all enemies.
Foreign and domestic.
Foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith.
That I will bear true faith.
And allegiance.
And allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States.
To the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And to the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely.
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation.
Without any mental reservation.
Or purpose of evasion.
Or purpose of evasion.
And that I will well.
And I will well.
And faithfully discharge.
And faithfully discharge.
The duties upon.
The duties upon.
Which I'm about to enter.
Which I'm about to enter.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Speech, speech.
Well, I'm honored to be a part of this community in this role. I'm happy that my family is here. I'm excited to work with all of the city of Redondo. I especially thank Melanie for your long, long time's support as well as joy. And I look forward to working with all of the council members. I got to meet Councilmember Obaji earlier and I looked for Mayor Light yesterday, as well as Councilmember Castle yesterday. It was, it's been a whirlwind over the last two days, but I look forward to working with all of you and being a part of this great community.
Great.
Welcome.
Welcome.
And we're very excited to have her.
Did you want to get a picture with your family?
Sure. I think they're slightly embarrassed, but yes. Perfect.
Three, two, one, one more. Two, two, one.
Welcome aboard.
Thank you.
Welcome aboard. Okay, first order of business. Here to honor our titleists from the JV cheerleader team at Redondo Union. So I have a commendation for each of you for winning the national titles. I'd like to invite up Lisa Headsphith, Rory Gessler, as the coaches. Come on up. So the Redondo Union High School first-ever JV cheer team participated at the U.S. Spirit Nationals Cheerleading Championship at the Anaheim Convention Center in February. They won two national titles. Congratulations. They earned extremely high scores of 97.5 in the crowd leader division and 98.4 in the band chant division. And that score in the band chant division was highest amongst other college varsity teams, so they beat out even the college, really. What an achievement. To celebrate this achievement, we have certificates for each of the team members and the coach. Please come up as I call your name. And forgive me if I don't say your name right. Ella Bolan. Congratulations. Isabella Medina. Congratulations. Gianna Samaro. Gabrielle Vargas. Juliette Matthews. The sea of reds moving up here. The tide's coming up in the room. Lily Burke. Congratulations, Lily. Lola Bark. Congratulations. Maddie Guero. Congratulations, Maddie.
Thank you so much.
Marlena Lepan. Leaping, leaping, leaping. Sorry about that.
Thank you so much.
Congratulations. Well done. Roya Lima.
Thank you.
Paige Russell. I like the clinking of the medals as you're coming up. Ryan Pepper. Congratulations. Samantha Milkus. Congratulations. Sophia McGraw. Congrats. Valentina Stupa. Congratulations. Ursula Beely. Congratulations. Rory Gessler. And Lisa Headsphith. My pleasure. Would you like to say a few words on behalf of your girls?
Thank you, Mayor Light. Thank you, council members. We're so delighted to be here. I will tell you that my daughter, Coach Izzy, and Coach Rory, we have been welcomed with open arms in the Redondo Union High School family, and we're so excited to be a part of it. But tonight is the day for them, and they have worked so hard. Mayor, they have worked countless hours while maintaining a high GPA. And when they have Redondo right in front of them, they represent our city well. They have put in a lot of work, and we're so proud of them. They didn't bring back just one, they brought back two titles to the great city of Redondo Beach. Yes, and we're so proud of them, and congratulations, ladies, congratulations. Thank you for allowing us to be here tonight. It means a big thing for us.
I think we need a cheer.
On the spot, come on. Just a short one, like V-I-C-T-O-R-Y something.
H-Y-P-E, get hype, get hype. H-Y-P-E, get hype, get hype. H-Y-P-E, get hype, get hype, get hype.
Congratulations for national champions. Thank you for representing Redondo so well. Can we get a picture with the council?
We want the coaches back up here.
The coaches back, and then we'll have the front row kind of bend down.
Why don't you get up front, I'll get down.
I feel like they've done this before, though.
Those just bend down, yeah. Three. Let me just make sure, hold on. I'll do one more.
Okay, thank you. One last round for the JV cheerleaders in Redondo Union National Champions Play.
Let's put this on the homepage.
Now you have to stay for the whole media.
Thank you so much. Yes.
You win with another team or the same team?
Good job, Coach, doing well.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
You won with this team before here? Wow. Wow, amazing. You must be an amazing coach, or I know you're an amazing coach.
Yes.
Okay, next, I'd like to make a proclamation of the May 2025 as Mental Health Awareness Month. BCHD Board Member Jane Deal and Youth Advisory Group Member Alina Rashid-Faroki, I hope I got that right? Did I get that right? Okay, come on down. May is Mental Health Awareness Month. With our partner, Beach Cities Health District, we strive to bring attention to mental health in our community because it matters. As a community, we can deepen our social connections and build resilience. Loneliness has been declared an urgent public health concern by the U.S. General Dr. Vivek Murthy. Its association with heart disease, dementia, stroke, depression, anxiety, and premature death. But this can be prevented by simply saying hello to your neighbors, initiate a conversation, and check in with your friends. Jane, anything you want to add to that?
Of course. Thank you all for inviting us this evening. Thank you to the mayor, city council, newly elected individuals, glad to see you. I'm sure we'll be seeing lots more. Once again, thank you for the time to give us, be able to give this presentation to the city to remind people about May mental health. As mentioned, I have two district ambassadors with me. Alina, who is part of the Alcove Youth Council, and Dennis, who is now presently on our working group, working with other individuals to help us with the movement of the Center for Health and Fitness, better known as the gym. Beach Cities Health District has been worked in partnership with cities and school districts in Hermosa, Manhattan, Beach, Redondo Beach, recognizing May as Mental Health Awareness Month. Mental health and substance use is one of BCHD's priorities. The other priority is physical health. This year's continuation of Mental Health is Health campaign focuses on social connection, as the mayor has mentioned. Unfortunately, the 2023 Gallup Wellbeing Index reported nearly one in five in the Beach City residents having little or no social contact. In observance of Mental Health Awareness Month in May, BCHD is encouraging the community to combat loneliness and foster meaningful social connections. The Health District itself provides opportunities for the youth at Alcove, which we're so proud that all of your city council people have come to visit us. In this case, we were actually very surprised to find out that we were needed more than we anticipated. Plus, it gives our youth a place to come to connect where they don't have to be exposed to alcohol or drugs. We have many opportunities for adults to volunteer as well. Plus, we visit housebound residents. The gym provides a place for many people to form friendships. Mental health actually is happiness, are serious issues, and you are partners with us to make a difference. Wouldn't it be wonderful if the Beach Cities were known to be the happiest cities in California?
It would be, thank you. Thanks for what you do for the community. Now, as mayor, on behalf of the city council and the residents of Redondo Beach, I proclaim this Mental Health Awareness Month. Thanks for what you do.
Yeah, that's yours.
Thank you.
Works right. Sure, it's not their picture. Yes, yes.
There we go. Three, two, one, one more. Three, two, one, perfect.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for your support.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you for your support.
Good to meet you.
Thank you for your support.
So have you in a row.
Well, that was fun.
Lots to celebrate.
Okay, announcements. Councilmember Waller.
My first community meeting will be May 10th at the Alta Vista Community Center from 10:00 a.m. to 11:00 a.m. And later that day, the Women's Club of Redondo Beach will be holding their spaghetti dinner, same May 10th, from 5:00 to 8:00 p.m. Their clubhouse is right across the street from fire station number one at 400 South Broadway.
Okay, Councilmember Castle.
Thank you. Just a quick update, we had the Beach Life Festival this weekend in District 2 down at the waterfront.
We did?
We did. A few people went down, but it was very successful. I think it's probably one of the most successful events that they've held for us down in the waterfront. And the California Surf Club is also opening up this week, which is another key component in the overall economic development of the waterfront. So those are two big, important things that are happening in the waterfront. I also held my first community meeting a couple of weeks ago. There's a recording of that. We had guest speaker Mike Wazansky, our city manager, talk about different issues affecting not only District 2, but the entire city. And then also, I wanted to announce that my next community meeting will be on May 29th at 5:30 p.m. next door at the library. And I will be sending out questionnaires in my newsletter, and if there are any issues that anyone would like to discuss, feel free to email those to me, and we can discuss them at the next community meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Kalu Jervich.
Thank you, Mayor. I had my District 3 community meeting on Zoom on the 22nd. Thank you for all, to all those who attended. Great discussions about what was going on in the city. I'll be having my meeting later this, probably the last week of May. But I also wanted to put out there for our youth commissioners, the deadline to apply for next year is Friday, May 30th. We are recruiting ages 13 to 19 to be on our youth commission. And we, you know, I'm very proud of the youth commissioners that we've had serving this past year, and I want to keep the momentum going. I'm putting it out there that stellar performance may earn a letter of recommendation from a council member, or maybe the mayor. So, May 30th deadline. That's it, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Obaji.
No major announcements, just, I did have lunch last week with our Athens representative, Sharon Fox. She explained to me some of the changes that Athens is going to be seeking and we're going to need in our agreement with Athens coming up. Before we go down that path, I do want to get feedback from the community. If there's things that you love about Athens services, responsiveness, they pick up bulk items, things that you think they could do better, please give us that feedback as we go into a next round of negotiating amendment with Athens. That's it, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Barrett.
Thank you, Mayor. I wanted to agree with what Councilmember Castle had to say about the Beach Life Festival. And I do want to thank Alan Sanford and company for a great event. And I want to give a special thanks to our city staff, in particular, city staff, in particular our public safety personnel, police and fire. Regan was there and others, and our public works who participate in that and really the whole of city approach that was quarterbacked by our city managers. So thank you for that to all of you. And I did want to make an announcement, if I may. We are going to have a community meeting in District Five. It's going to be Wednesday, May 28th. Redondo Beach Performing Arts Center, it's going to be open to the entire city. And we are going to have as our special guest, the newly elected city attorney, Joy Ford. So she'll be there, I presume, giving her presentation in person as to her goals and objectives for her tenure, as well as answering questions, providing information and the like. So I think it's going to be a great event. As always, we will have refreshments, and I hope to see everybody there Wednesday, May 28th, 6:00 p.m. Redondo Beach Performing Arts Center. Thank you.
Thank you. It seems like it's been a while since we've been up here doing this. So I do have some stuff that's been built up. First off, I did get to attend Rotary Club luncheon down in the harbor where they recognized our first responders and gave some words out. So that was, it's very nice to see the community recognize the service of our first responder. And similarly, I went to the Beach Life Gala where they collect money from people like me who donated and give them out to charities throughout the city. But they also recognized our firefighters who helped out in the Palisades Fire, and that was very nice. In fact, Rick Springfield performed there, and he said his motivation was, you know, so many people around him lost their homes. He lives up in that area, and he wanted to give back to the firefighters and first responders who helped them out. So, so just glad to see our first responders who do so much for us get recognition, and I applaud that, and I applaud the the men and women of our police and fire department. I got to attend a women's club. Our women's club was sponsoring the regional get together of women's clubs in our, in our area at the King Harbor Yacht Club on what turned out to be a rainy and cloudy day, but it was amazing. We're on the second floor of the yacht club looking out over the ocean. There are 80 kids there participating in a sailing competition in our harbor. And at the same time, Lana Keela was paddling out and practicing in the rain. So these ladies got treated to a great spectacle right, right in our harbor. And it's good to recognize women's club. They, they started just 16 years after the city formed, and they have one of, they maintain one of the oldest buildings in our city. So hats off to them. Councilmember Kalajervich and I got to participate in a civic seal, judging students, giving their civic seal presentation. That was half a day. I found that very inspiring to hear those kids. I don't think I could have done that when I was in high school, so that was a lot of fun. And while we're there, they had a battle of the bands and salsa dads on their quad. So we have an amazing school system, and I was pleased to be able to contribute to that. Thursday, our county supervisor has called a mayor's convening, so I'll be attending that and hopefully bringing back some data from all the mayors that fall under, under her jurisdiction. So I'll report back out when I hear what happens there. And that's it. Thank you. Okay, approve the order of agenda. City manager Wazansky, I think you have something you want to add.
Yeah, one update this evening, if we could, please, Mayor. Move the second public hearing item, the urgency ordinance matter regarding the smoke shops, from the public hearing section of the agenda to the discussion section of the agenda, effectively moving L two to N two.
Do you want it second or first?
I can go second. It's fine. We can follow the transit item. We do not have to conduct a hearing at this stage of the action when considering the urgency ordinance. It would be if we indeed continue the moratorium beyond the initial 45-day cycle where we would need to have the fully scheduled notice public hearing. So we're okay to take that action through traditional discussion, which is what we would prefer, just to keep our precedent clear.
Okay, so for the audience, if you didn't follow that, L?
Two to N two.
L two is going to N two. Let's see, anyone from the council wish to move something in the agenda, or can I get a motion to do the agenda as modified by the city manager approved?
So moved.
Second.
Motion to second, all four.
Aye.
Councilmember Obaji?
Aye.
Okay, anybody against? Okay, thank you. Sorry, I'm lost on the agenda here. I'm flipping around too much. Let's see, we're going to take, can I get a motion for agency recess to a regular meeting of the Community Financing Authority?
So moved.
Second.
All four?
Aye.
Okay, thank you. I'd like to call to order a meeting of the Redondo Beach Community Financing Authority. Could I get a roll call, please?
Member Waller.
Present.
Member Castle.
Here.
Member Kalu Jidovic.
Here.
Member Obaji.
Here.
Member Barrett.
Here.
Chairman Light.
Here.
Can I get a motion to approve the order of agenda?
So moved.
Second.
All four?
Aye.
Okay, do we have any blue folder items?
None for this agency. Thank you.
Okay, the consent calendar. Does anybody wish to pull anything from the consent calendar? There's four items on there. Okay, seeing none. Can I get a motion to approve the consent calendar items?
So moved. Second.
We have a motion to second. Anyone from the audience wish to address item C one, C two, C three, or C four? Okay, anybody online?
I have none. No, I have no e-commerce.
Okay, can, I'll call the, call the vote then, all four?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Okay, passes. Okay, skipping down, we have no excluded consent calendar items, skipping down to item E, public participation on non-agenda items. Does anybody from the public wish to address the council on the Community Financing Authority on anything that's not on the agenda for the Community Financing Authority tonight? We'll limit this to 30 minutes. Everybody gets three minutes and you can only speak once. Nobody? Okay, anybody online?
None.
Okay. Let's see, any referrals to staff? For the community financing. Okay, can I get a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Okay, motion to second, all four?
Aye.
Okay, thank you. Okay, returning back to the regular agenda. Item G, do we have any blue folder items for the city council meeting?
Yes, Mayor. We have.
Should I do a roll call here?
Oh, yes.
Yeah, could I have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Waller.
Present.
Councilmember Castle.
Here.
Councilmember Kalu Jidovic.
Here.
Councilmember Obaji.
Here.
Councilmember Barrett.
Here.
And Mayor Light.
Here.
Now, any blue folder items?
Thank you. For J one, public participation on non-agenda items, you have public communications. For P one, related to the appointing delegates and alternates as official representatives, revised resolution, the term date changed to June 30th, 2026, and the draft recommendations by Mayor Light. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. If you could let IT know my computer went dead again.
He's right there.
Seems like a weekly occurrence now.
Only for you.
Okay.
Okay, with that, we'll go to the consent calendar. Does anybody wish to approve any of the items under H consent calendar?
Mayor, I didn't get a vote for this.
Okay, motion to, can I get a motion to receive and file? Second, all four?
Aye.
Okay, now consent calendar. Anybody want to pull anything from consent calendar, the items under H? Councilmember Kalajervich?
I would like to pull H nine, please.
Okay, Councilmember Obaji or Barrett?
H nine as well.
Okay. Okay, so I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent calendar items other than H nine.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, a motion to second. Anyone from the audience wish to address any, any item H, under consent calendar other than H nine? Looks like Dr. Andy Lesser. You have three minutes, sir.
Thank you so much. I won't need three minutes. The last meeting I attended was a little hectic, so if I didn't say it before, congratulations. My new council member, Waller, council member Castle, Joy, congratulations, and it's nice to see all of you back again. I just want to say briefly on H 14, you know, I'm a neighborhood watch block captain, and of course followed the Supreme Court overturning Martin versus Boise with Grant passed versus Johnson. And I'm so proud of our city for rewriting a new anti-camping ordinance that also stresses that we're continuing the humanitarian approach of still offering shelter, offering mental health services. So it's, the carrot has always been there, so now it's kind of the, the stick is there too, because we're all concerned about safety in the city. So I'm so glad that you included the bus stop provision, because that's been a major problem with loitering at the bus stops, on the benches, trash. And unfortunately, at Torrance and P C H, people using the sidewalk as a bathroom by the bus stop because the, somebody lives at the bus stop and defecates right nearby. So I think this is a great ordinance. I missed the first reading, so here I am for the second reading and the adoption. Thank you so much. Good night.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to address the council on any of the consent calendar, consent calendar items except H nine? Anyone online?
I have no hands raised, and I have no e-commerce for any of that.
All four?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, motion passes.
Okay. H 10, adopt by title only, resolution number C C dash 2505 dash 027. A resident of City Council, Redondo Beach, California, approving the suspension of preferential parking hours in the Vincent and Vincent Two preferential parking districts for limited hours on June 11th and June 12th, 2025. H 11, adopt by title only, resolution number C C dash 2505 dash 028. A resident of City Council, Redondo Beach, California, leasing certain properties to Pro-Life USA LLC. For H 14, adopt by title only, ordinance number 3292 dash 25, an ordinance of the City of Redondo Beach, California, amending Municipal Code, Chapter 34, to Title Four regarding unlawful camping for second reading and adoption. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Now going to excluded items. H nine, Councilmember Kalajervich.
Yes, I wanted to pull this item. This is for the S C E Row area that is between, west of P C H on Hurando there. And I realize that this has been a project in the works for a while. I wanted to bring this as a discussion item, as it, to me, lends itself more to a discussion as opposed to a consent calendar item. So this is to approve additional funds for that project. And the, I guess I'd like to open this up for a discussion because this is using additional Quimby funds, which are development fees. And I would like to just put out there that I think we can, well, I guess the question is, while this, it's much over budget than we had planned, is there, one, a way to maybe rework the, the scope of work to fit into a budget? And/or I think it could be a good discussion to bring during budget when we are allocating funds to various projects, and this being one of them.
All right, before you make.
Go ahead. I have that part of my computer back. I can see the presentation, but not the hands up. So we'll go with the hands up until we figure that out. Thank you, Mayor. I had similar, slightly different thoughts on this that Councilmember Kalajervich mentioned, that I spoke to you, the mayor, about, and Councilmember Obaji, city manager. Big picture. It's a million-plus-dollar expenditure, it meaning the project, which is a landscape improvements west of P C H. Kind of the questions I had were, you know, is this something we should be going forward with? I'm not saying I'm against it, but I thought it'd be a good idea to maybe have a public discussion with respect to, and maybe kick it off with the city manager. What is this project? What, what are we intending to achieve by it? Does this meet the goals? Is it better suited to be part of the budget discussion? Is it somewhat time-sensitive? Because we have some bids that have come in. What are the maintenance costs? Upsides, downsides, just some more background, and I, I point to the city manager, somebody who's been here throughout the entire process. And I just feel like, from a matter of public education, this would be a good way to go with it, and then hear from council members on it. And I'd certainly like to hear from the mayor, who's an expert, I believe, in parklands and open space and the like. So that, those were my thoughts. As I said, I haven't really drawn an opinion one way or the other, so if, with your indulgence, if we could hear from the city manager?
Sure.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, happy to expand on this project. It has, as was mentioned, it has been several years in the making. It's been the subject of multiple strategic planning efforts. The goal to expand the city's open space and utilization of this property in this, at this particular location has been the subject of council consideration for my entire career here, literally, for somewhere between 18 and 19 years. The, the goals have remained consistent. That conversation has evolved over time in some, in some of the early project design or scope conversations, it centered around ball fields and other active uses. That was always a difficult sell with Southern California Edison as it pertains to utilization of the site. There are very strict.
They own the property.
Yeah, Southern California Edison does own the property in fee. We licensed this property several years ago at about $5,000 a year to gain access to perhaps expand our open space holdings in the community. To, to go back to the trail of thought of the type of utilization of the site that's been contemplated over the years, active, active ball field use, other more traditional sort of sports opportunities there were not an option for us because of the limitations that S C E has, as it pertains to erecting structures underneath their transmission corridor. So what we've, over the years, been really funneled into as it pertains to a use is more of a passive, open space property disposition. And that has lent itself well, not only to achieve the goal of expanding our open space holdings to the community, but to alleviate some of our ongoing maintenance and operations pressures that, that come with a more active play or ball field space. While the proposed planting will require some level of maintenance, periodic weeding, most notably, and occasionally decomposed granite pathway re-leveling and that type of thing, it does not come with the day-to-day mowing and more traditional park landscape maintenance requirements that we have in our other regional park sites. So from that perspective, it's, it's long been envisioned to be an open space area for the city. Several years ago, we started working in earnest with S C E to obtain the license for the site. We were successful in doing that. That did come with the conditions I noted. And then it took us several years ultimately to design and then receive approval from Edison for this specific park project that you see here. In fact, we received, I want to say, that last design approval just this past February, which was, is what allowed us to go out to bid and pursue these, these contractor proposals. The, the project has been funded in a couple of different tranches over time. About $150,000 of general capital project funds were used initially designed the site. The council appropriated a little over $300,000 a few years back of our more flexible and discretionary open space acquisition funds for the project, and then another tranche of about $400,000 of Quimby funds. This proposed resolution would add $300-plus thousand dollars of additional Quimby funds to not only provide what's required for the proposed contract, but also provide funding for contingency, about $125,000. So it's not certain it will spend the full 338. That's all. That's only going to be if, in the event of us requiring that contingency. And I'll tell you, with the design work that's occurred out there, there's been a lot of thought to that. I, I don't anticipate us using much of that contingency for this type of a project. But nonetheless, we always recommend it that's available to us in order to complete a full execution. As I said, literally, and Annie and I were talking about this this afternoon, thousands of staff hours have gone into preparing these project, this project application and design. And then hundreds of hours, Elizabeth House's time, and, and others trying to convince SCE to ultimately extend us the license. So this has been really a long, earnest effort that's survived multiple city councils. What I would say, and why I recommended this as a, as a more perfunctory item tonight, is that, A, it culminates a long, long effort, as I mentioned, but also it, it serves to accomplish really three primary goals. It allows us to grow open space in our community. We haven't done that for decades. And that's really the purpose of the Quimby funding source, is to help expand open space in our community. So that.
Purpose of the Quimby funds is to expand.
Is to expand open space in our community. That's really what the Quimby fund, the development impact fee, that's what generates funding to the Quimby fund account. And we, as you all know, we receive that on a per housing construction unit basis. Every home that's constructed, there's a $25,000 fee that's contributed to our Quimby fund to help ultimately expand our open space holdings and provide that relief, if you will, for the impact associated with housing. So this is the one project that's been in the CIP for years that actually does that.
And I, and I interrupted you, you were saying you were making a recommendation.
Yeah, so, yeah, so ultimately, the recommendation here is to extend the utilization of that Quimby account to fund what's necessary for us to honor this and award this contract. But the two other points that this project makes for me is, it makes clear to Edison that regardless of its, the ultimate disposition of the site, that this community would like to see this property in perpetuity used for open space purposes. Now, I think building this project and making clear our intentions with the license allows us to do that. And then third, it, it has been clear in Edison's practice that once a use and a licensed site has been occupied and developed, they have routinely extended the five-year license terms almost on a ministerial basis. So same, the same condition exists for our North Redondo Beach bike path, same condition exists for the private nurseries who have occupied the transmission corridor in our community for decades.
And the point being, if this project goes forward, it seems possible but unlikely that Edison would then come bulldoze it away in five years.
Correct, so, and I think ultimately executing this project helps increase our chances of that certainty in the future.
Plant some flack.
Yeah, exactly. So, and then the last benefit I see, in addition to the open space, many that'd be available to our members of the public and the region at large, we also beautify one of our key entry points into the city. This is, this area has been dirt gravel lot for decades. It's ugly, in my view, has been for, for many, many years. This project, once mature, once fully developed, I think will be an attractive piece, particularly on that upper plateau for folks entering our city. So it, it checks several boxes, in my view, which is why ultimately I've recommended tonight's action.
All right, and you, thank you, Mr. City Manager. And you had mentioned you'd put it on as a consent calendar item, presumably instead of what, we have the budget coming in a few weeks.
We, we do.
Why, why now?
We were anticipating this project coming to fruition this fiscal year, executing these contracts, and we tried to march forward and execute according to that schedule. If I delayed every prospective supplemental appropriation associated with projects over the course of the fiscal year and delayed it perhaps to mid-year or the budget, we would rarely get things done. And it would ultimately lead to multiple delays. So I feel like this is a culmination of a longstanding effort. I'm hopeful the council continues to be supportive of it, and that was why I recommended on the consent calendar night, and requiring the four-fifths vote that's, that's needed for us to make this action effective.
Thank you, Mr. City Manager. Thank you, Mayor.
Sure. So let me go into a little bit, from a history perspective. The first time I heard someone talk about this was Bill Brand in 2010, pitched it to the council at that time. The council wasn't receptive to it at the time. The reasoning that Bill pitched it was, we were fighting the power plant at the time. We had the vision, he had the vision, to put a park down at the power plant. He wanted a grand green belt leading down to that power plant site. Also extending to a green belt, many have heard me say this, a green belt to the sea connecting North Redondo to South Redondo. And this was to, put that stake in as our first effort to do that. Also along the lines of what you were saying, City Manager Witzansky, you know, you turn the corner there, it's an ugly dirt lot that the most use we've seen out of it is construction equipment parked there and four-wheelers having fun just doing donuts in the dirt. That's the most active uses we've seen out of it for years, and it's a blight on the entrance to our town. We, at one point, and this, this jumps forward a few years, when we were exploring locations for the community garden, we had proposed this, and city staff at the time, I wasn't up here, but city staff said that SCE would not entertain a community garden, which I since independently verified with them. They don't want any community gardens, although Torrance has one and its grandfathered in. They said they're not, they're not approving any more community gardens on their property because they're, if they ever have to go through there, they'd have to mess up people's gardens. It didn't, it has fencing and all that kind of stuff. On top of that, SBPC's been behind this because we're at, we are park poor. We're an anomaly as a wealthy community that has less than three acres per 1,000 residents, and that's the, that's the state standard for park poor. And it's an embarrassment for our city to be, you know, we're a great city and we're park poor. This is the first acquisition of any size I've seen since I moved here, 1989. In fact, we've lost ground because we used to count, used to count the community center, where Kensington is now, as, as Public Park, the playground out there. So we've actually lost ground on, on park area since I've lived here, while the population seat keeps going up. When I first moved here, we were 2.89 acres per 1,000 residents, and that's counting the 50-acre County Beach. If you took that away, we're below two, two acres per 1,000 residents. And I think that's how LA County categorizes us as under two right now. So it's an embarrassment. This is one of the few places we can add parkland for relatively cheap price. The, just redoing the playground at Dominguez for, for less than half an acre cost us 1.5 million. Here we're getting two and a half acres for about $1 million, which is pretty impressive. So I, and I do know, you know, we did go for grant for this, unfortunately because of the Pastilnikov pulling the AES side, we lost the funding for that. But that was before I was up here too. Elizabeth enlisted me to help write that grant, and it was for native plants. So that's been the vision for quite some time, and it's been shown that walks in nature are, we're talking about Mental Health Month, and walks through nature are a positive factor on mental health. And so, you know, I'm hoping the council will support this due to its long history, due to, you know, it was Bill Brand's wish, and, and it's good for the community. And, and frankly, for two and a half acres, a million bucks for two and a half acres of something that's dirt now and unused is pretty darn cheap. I think it's a bargain. So I'd ask the council to consider supporting this. Councilmember Obaji.
All right, thank you. I've been trying to log into my legislative account, but I can't seem to do so. If we could light up 2B, please, just for the members of the public, so you know what property we're talking about. This is the parcel here, and it's, I think, am I connected? Let's see. Is that the right chord? Follow the chord.
That's not 2.
3B.
Yeah, you're on, 2B's over here.
Oh, 3B, okay.
I think.
Did you hear, you say, it's 3B instead of 2?
I just can't pull the plug out. Is that it? Uh, it's not connected.
It's not plugged in.
I got the wrong chord.
No, it's not plugged in either one.
Here we go, let's see if 2B now works.
2B, okay, hold on.
Here we go, I think I got it. All right.
2B?
Yes.
Here we go.
So this is it. And the only thing I've ever done here was we shut down, when we shut down the power plant, we pulled the switch right here. But it's totally underutilized. And I'll say that years ago, Mayor Brand had worked hard negotiating with SCE, spoke to the CEO of SCE to try to get this license, and eventually got it for a nominal fee. And we started funding it. I'll tell, you know, the entire council, anecdotally, from my work on the COG, where we award money as part of the public, as a part of the transportation subcommittee, we are constantly getting projects that were partially funded or fully funded when, at the time that they were funded, but then now there's, they're costing way more, a third more, 40% more, sometimes 50% more, and then we're needing to appropriate the additional money to complete the project. So I think this is gonna, this is bringing up two questions that we'll repeatedly get with this new council. One, what will we do when previously funded projects come back to us needing more funding? Will we just stop them in their tracks, or will we continue them on? Also, what will we do when the prior councils have made a policy decision to move forward with the project and direct staff to work towards a project, and then it comes to us for a final approval and to move forward? Will we stop it in its tracks, or will you, will we continue the progress that had been made before us? So I say that we continue the progress, expand the very little open space that we have here in Redondo, and this is exactly the type of park that we want, low maintenance. It's not gonna, you know, it's not a play, expensive playground that's gonna fade in the sun and the like, and potentially, you know, a great walkway to get down from District Four, District Three, down to beach-like festivals for many years to come. So I'd make a motion to approve by four-fifths this additional appropriation to finish the funding of this project.
Okay, anyone else wish to?
I, I do have just a few more comments. So these Quimby fees, development fees are for land acquisition and recreation for, as a relief for development, for residents that have that burden of development. So, don't get me wrong, I think this project is great. I think that we need to expand our open space. What is giving me heartburn is that we're, we're putting in a significant chunk into it, and, you know, when we talk about bids coming in, you know, with the pure parking structure, we're reworking that job scope. Is there a way that we can do that with this project to make it, you know, kind of fit with the budget that we currently have? I mean, budget, the, the RFP went out, budgets came back, and, and we're just taking it. We look at other bids and we work, rework them, and I think there's an opportunity here. What I would hate to have happen with this space is that we spend $1 million to put our flag in this, you know, put our stake in the ground, and nobody uses it. It could be like the cornhole installation I put in at Franklin Park. It didn't go well. But this is a significant investment. And so, you know, it, it is reasonable to think that we will have the license extended several times over. I, it's, it's a lot of money, and I would hate to, this, my point in bringing this up with budget is that I would hate to fund this and, and have this deplete our Quimby or subdivision park funds and not have things to allocate to other things like the Perry Park Teen Center. The youth commission's worked on that, and they have their vision. And if, if we can't provide that to them, because they, they have come to me saying that there's a lot of space in the community for younger kids, but there's no space for older kids in the community. And so while I, I support this project, it's giving me heartburn to add this chunk of money to it. So I will be abstaining from the vote tonight.
Maybe if I could, Mayor, just to address two points there. We, we will have resources available to us to consider improvements at, at the teen center. So that, that issue, I don't think will be problematic as it relates to the use of this, this source of Quimby funds. There will be opportunity for that consideration. Secondarily, I will say, we, we already did value engineer this project to get us to this point. It's, and, and what we're finding when we value engineer, by the time we get through it, and by the way, valuing engineer here would not only require us to go back to Arquatera, spend more money to design that value engineering, but would also then, after we accomplish that goal, go back to SCE for an adjustment to the approved plan set, which could further delay. That, that was in itself a four-year process.
Right, I mean, this is the crux when we don't own the property, right? Like, it just makes it essentially.
And, and the problem we're facing with all contracts, all awards and projects is, delay is just not our friend, right? What we value engineer out of the site and scope, we may lose in cost escalation waiting for that change. So we, we kicked that around. That's why we have the, the upper plateau, if you will, as the proposed site now, because we were concerned about budget. So if, if that was a realistic possibility for us, we, we would have thrown that out as a consideration for you all. I just don't see that being cost-effective for us. And I will tell you that we will have additional Quimby funds to program next year. We will be proposing some adjustments to programming that stand today, and we will be able to give back some funds to Quimby to offset this cost through project closeout for three projects that were under budget ultimately with final appropriations. So we're okay on the Quimby side to absorb this, and that's in part why we recommended this the way we did.
Okay, did we get a second?
I'll, I'll second it.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second. Any member of the public wish to address the council on this item? Or city staff?
Public Corps Director, if the motion might also include the resolution of award.
It's the staff recommendation here, yeah.
Sorry, yes. Four-fifths vote, title only, resolution number CC-2505-025, and resolution number
You accept that change?
Yes.
Okay. Any members of the public wish to address this item? Anyone online?
I have no one online or ecomments.
Okay. I will call the vote then. Councilmember Barrett.
Well, thank you, Mayor. Just very quick, I found what Councilmember Kalid Eravich said to be important and serious concerns. Overall, though, I believe what the mayor said, I found to be very compelling and persuasive, so I'm gonna vote yes.
Councilmember Obaji?
Yes.
Councilmember Kalid Eravich?
I will abstain.
Councilmember Castle?
Yes.
Councilmember Waller?
Yes.
Okay, motion carries. Thank you.
Adopt by four-fifths vote, entitled only, resolution number CC-2505-025. A resident of City Council, Redondo Beach, California, authorizing a fiscal year 2024, 2025 budget modification to appropriate $338,560 in subdivision park trust funds from the available fund balance to the SCE Row West of PCH Landscape Improvement, Phase One, Job Number 30850. Adopt by title only, resolution number CC-2505-026. A resident of City Council, Redondo Beach, California, awarding a contract to Marina Landscape Inc., a California corporation, in the amount of $946,560.50 for the SCE Row West of PCH Landscape Improvements, Job One, Phase One, Job Number 30850, project. Thank you.
Could you review that?
Just kidding, just kidding, thank you.
Okay, now we're going to item J, public participation on non-agenda items. This section is intended to provide members of the public with the opportunity to comment on any subject that does not appear elsewhere in this agenda for action. This section will be limited to 30 minutes. Each speaker will be afforded three minutes to address the mayor and council. Each speaker will be permitted to speak only once, and we'll do written requests first. The first one I have here is Jim Mueller.
Good evening, council. Excuse me, it's a privilege, of course, to be able to address you. Paradise is described as a garden abundant with flowers and lovely trees. Hell is a row of concrete boxes broiling in the sun. Preserving paradise is talked about a lot in Redondo Beach, and I don't need to sing the praises of a tree-lined Redondo Beach neighborhood, you all know what I mean. But Redondo Beach, particularly North Redondo, is transitioning into a denser urban environment. Developers eager to squeeze more profit from a project continue to jam-pack Developers eager to squeeze more profit from a project continue to jam-pack lots with concrete boxes. And lots are clear-cut, because that's cheaper, too. That's what was planned for this lot at 2022 Matthews Avenue. Scrape these two beautiful, full-leafed, crown mature trees, stuff the bare lot to its boundaries with a concrete condo box. By the time I saw the construction permit, the plans had already been approved by the planning department. I called the city planning department and managed to convince them to force the contractor to save one of the trees, and that was last fall. I want you to take a look at this. This is what the contractor did to that tree that was supposed to be saved. They hacked it up, and the final result is this, ready for the trash man. They cut it down.
The second tree.
The second tree, the one that was supposed to be saved. Some vague language is buried in Title 10-2.2 of the code about preserving trees in developments. Is it taken seriously in the design of the project or the planning department review? Well, this is an example of maybe not. How long will our tree paradise live without stronger action? Do we want thirty years, do we want to wait thirty years for those sapling replacements to mature? Redondo Beach will be a hellscape of concrete boxes before then. Redondo Beach's tree cover is already falling behind other beach cities, according to a Forest Service study done in 2022. A California city, though, similar to Redondo Beach, has taken action. Encinitas has studied the issue and drafted a specific mature tree ordinance preservation, ordinance set for approval by this June. Preserving mature trees is baked into the design phase of all of the development projects. I appeal to the planning commission and the council to use the Encinitas ordinance as a model for Redondo...
I'm sorry, Jim, your time is up.
...preservation.
Thanks for bringing it to our attention. Appreciate it. Okay, next is Jess Money, and then I have no more cards. Thanks, Scott.
Jess Money, District Three. A pickup here where I left off the last meeting I attended. It's a little chart I made up, just keep track of things. And so I'll give you the summary. Chris Berman's fastest three minutes on Monday Night Football. As far as complaints of wrongdoing, allegations of criminal behavior, at the State Bar, we have Zain Obaji, Mike Webb, and Joey Ford. At the FPPC, we have Chad Castle, Mike Webb, and Joey Ford. At the LA County DA, we have Jim Light, Zain Obaji, Todd Lowenstein, Mike Webb, Joey Ford, and Mike Wazansky. At the Secretary of State, we have Jim Light, Zain Obaji, Todd Lowenstein, Mike Webb, and Joey Ford again. And then at the DOJ, we have Jim Light, Zain Obaji, Mike Webb, Joey Ford. By the way, Mr. Obaji, it's my understanding from the DOJ that there are at least three and maybe four other complaints against you for violations of your, or breaches of your DPA. I also understand, you know, the city's hired Phil Toomey now to investigate allegations of misuse of police officers and public equipment in campaign materials. That allegation was already sustained by the police department against the officers involved. So I'm wondering what's taking Mr. Toomey so long. I suspect that he's definitely trying to hold off until the DOJ and the DA render their verdicts on our allegations for fear of adding fuel to the fire. Now, I'm a realist, I don't think most of these will result in action. But there's twenty-three of them. So the law of statistical probability is that maybe some of them will go through, and I sure hope so. It'll take six months, a year, maybe two years, but I hope to see several of you in orange.
Okay, anyone else wish to address the council at this time? On non-agenda items, come on up.
This is my first time addressing the council.
That's okay, yeah. If you could give us your name.
My name is Scott William Griffin. I am a resident of Redondo Beach, and I just thought that it would be a good idea to bring to the attention of the city council that pushing for more California native plants might be a good idea, or in terms of water supply. When we have a lot of non-native plants, it kind of takes up a lot of water, which is not really that good for the environment. Just having more native plants can definitely help us with water, because I know that in the Palisade fires, and all these fires that have been happening around, we have ran out of water, ran out of water. But this is just something to think about, sort of, that we should push for this and try to keep more native plants while pushing out invasive species. And that is all.
Speak into the choir with me.
Thank you. That is all I have to say.
Okay, thank you very much. Thanks for coming down for your first time, appreciate it. Anyone else? Anyone online?
Mark Nelson.
Go ahead, Mark.
Are you there?
Yep, had done mute twice this time. All right, this is a request to have the Public Safety Commission added to the assessment of the 500, 600 block of North Prospect. Last week, safety concerns around the neighborhood were re-triggered when the pumping stations were moved around, and they're near the bus stop. And Director Simon had given us a child predator email a while back from LA County on security lighting. So that's definitely an issue. That also triggered other bus stop issues, not wildly different than what Dr. Lesser brought up about the need around the bus stop to have it openly visible without cars blocking it, so that we can see from both sides what's going on in there, so we don't wind up with the feces and all the rest of it that, again, that Dr. Lesser brought up. And also, Beach Cities has previously had issues with unhoused in their parking structures and camping in that area behind. So a bunch of different issues got rattled with that chain. Longtime neighbor Darryl Boyd, who at least a couple of you have met, he's also a thirty-year property owner, as are we, has been working to address some of these many problems that have increased in the past four years. As a direct result of the discomfort and fears associated with the frontage road safety and other things, we haven't spent much time in our Redondo home in the last four years. We're retired, so we can be away, but most others don't have that opportunity. At the recommendation of RVPD, our security systems were beefed up after a 2:00 AM stalking incident related to yet another hit-and-run on our cars. We can provide footage to the city of all that. Over the years, we've had six vehicles hit eight times in total. Following the stalking and hit-and-run, we no longer leave a car parked out on the street pointed north at that intersection. So there's no visible cue anymore indicating that the south end is one-way. At least our car pointing north made it obvious. That doesn't mean it stopped everybody. Our security system shows a big increase in wrong-way and reckless traffic for not having anything out there. There's numerous other problems that are caused at this deceptively complicated intersection. We appreciate the Public Works Department and Commissioner looking for solutions, and we strongly request the safe, the Public Safety Commission be added, including the safety of young e-bikers that are using the road the wrong way as a bike path to get to school and to come back. We strongly urge the city council to engage public safety and public works to jointly work to increase safety at the, around the bus stop, the Beach Cities area, and the 500, 600 service road. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Anyone else?
Your next speaker is Joan Irvine.
Hello, Joan.
Hi, how are you doing?
Doing great.
Uh-oh, what happened here?
Uh-oh, did we lose you?
Oh.
Mayors, and, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Oh, okay, great. Mayor, city council members, city staff, and people who are there, I just wanted to let you know about a great first Saturday sweep that Keep the Espinade Beautiful had this past Saturday. We were very, very fortunate that scout troops, there were five of them, 2935, 2002, 3005, 5555, 4325, and PAC 970, all came out to help clean up the Espinade. So it was great, because when you have that, we love when the children come. And of course, then we take some time and we talk about the benefits of cleaning up the Espinade, how it's good for the environment. And also, it's extremely good for the children to learn about volunteerism during that time. And as I said to the, excuse me, I hate to say to the Girl Scouts, one of the things, having been a Girl Scout, I knew about, you just think about, and you go, be prepared. And these young women and young men in our town, by their volunteerism, are starting to prepare to be good community leaders. So I just wanted to let you know, so that you can kind of give them a high five if you see any of them. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Our next person is Wayne Craig.
Hello, Wayne.
Hi, good evening, mayor and council. Wayne Craig, President of District One. Last week, I had the opportunity to spend several days up in Sacramento to talk with our wonderful legislators. Couple of the things that came up, and I texted some of the council members, were some bills that we should probably be aware of. I'll keep you posted, but one bill called AB 647, which is being sponsored by M. Gonzalez, basically will allow immediate upzoning of single parcel lots to allow eight units to be built on them. You heard me right, not one, not two, not four, but eight. There's a couple other, so this is something that will be coming out of the pipeline. The group I was with is actively trying to campaign against it. Hopefully, we'll make some progress on it. Another, there's several other bills that are coming up, too, that will expedite the approval process for permits. So example, something going through the planning department will have to be done within something about forty days or less. Now, in some cities, that may be impossible. So this is something that we're also fighting against as well. And finally, I wanted to mention something, last about a week ago, the, I think I mentioned before, the council meeting, some friends of mine whose home was saved in the Palisades fire, wanted to say thank you to our firefighters, our first responders. And they actually came to Fire Station Two, had a great taco truck come down and make a, you know, a really great meal for all the firefighters there. Councilmember Obaji was there with me as well, and it was a really great experience. There's an excellent write-up in the, in the user reader, there's actually some videos of them, my friends talking with the firefighters who actually responded, that they'll be kept, and Kenny Campos and other members of his team. Really a great event, and it was something that I think we all should be proud of as a community, that our firefighters and first responders were able to help a community in need at a very critical time. Anyway, that's all I have to say. Have a great night.
Thank you.
That concludes the Zoom, and we have one e-comment for the record. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so now we're gonna go into public hearings, so Item K, Ex parte communications. We have one reminder, we changed the L2 is now N2. So I'll poll the council on any ex parte communications related to L1. You, Waller?
Nothing.
Councilmember Castle?
Nothing.
Councilmember Khaled Eravich?
Staff.
Councilmember Obaji?
Which one's this?
This is the moratorium, no, this is the community block grant.
None, except for Councilmember Barrett to address that we're gonna discuss.
And Councilmember Barrett?
I spoke with the mayor, Councilmember Obaji, city staff.
And I spoke with Councilmember Barrett, so. Okay, let's go into Item L1, public hearing for adoption of the proposed community development block grant, CDBG, 2025 to 2030 consolidated plan. I'd like a motion to open the public hearing and take testimony.
So moved? Second.
Okay, motion to second, all four?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Okay, floor is yours.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. Elizabeth House, Community Services Director. Tonight, we are providing council an overview of the CDBG consolidated plan for the years 2025 to 2030. As you know, we presented this item to you initially at the April 15 meeting, that was the first public hearing. This is the second public hearing we're holding tonight. And with me to walk council through the plan and what it means for our CDBG-supported programs and projects is Joyce Lee. She is our project coordinator, project manager with MNS Engineering, and they help us manage our CDBG programs. So with that, I'll hand it over to Joyce.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and City Council members. Thank you for having me here today. Like Elizabeth said, I will be doing an overview of the five-year consolidated plan for CDBG funds. So as a recap, the consolidated plan is an extensive report, as well as an application to the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development to receive and implement federal funds. Specifically, we will be applying, in air quotations, for community development block grant funds, which is aimed to address housing and community development activities specifically for low and moderate income residents. The COM plan does include an analysis of Redondo Beach's housing and community needs, which was attained through community data as well as community input. Through these, through these analyses, staff was able to identify priority goals, which will guide federal expenditures for the next five years. Staff is proposing these seven goals in no particular order that does include the development of decent and affordable housing to provide vital public services and create sustainable neighborhoods, to create economic opportunities, and to prepare through pre-disaster recovery planning and response. For public comments, staff did receive one public comment over the thirty-day public review period, which began on April 5 and closed on May 5, and it was general overall support for the five-year consolidated plan.
That's why you put a check there?
That is. And that does conclude the overview.
I'm overwhelmed with information. Okay, anyone on the council wish to address this item? I can use my computer, I think. Yes. So I have no speakers. Okay, Councilmember Khaled Eravich?
Not a question, thank you for the report and all you do on this. Just given the current political environment, I realize that some of these programs may be cut or limited. And have, have we planned, or is there a way that we're gonna address, like, priority for some of these?
In terms of fair housing specifically, that's not, we're being told by HUD offices that it's no longer a requirement. But again, because these things continue to change, we've...
We're just kind of...
Kind of continuing our path and...
Okay, okay. I know you're watching it, and we've been alerted as well, but, thank you.
Yeah, I want to thank you for the work on the report. I've used some of the statistics in there already in briefings to some of our state legislators, so thank you. Councilmember Obaji?
So I'm just looking, thank you for the report, really comprehensive. Just looking at the, the report on incomplete kitchens and the like, sorted by area, median income. And I just wonder, what can we do? I see, you know, we have a significant number of units affecting all races, where the, they have one or more, one or more of four housing problems. Jurisdiction as a whole, sixteen hundred eighty units. What can we do as a city, a city council, in terms of policy to help bring these units into better condition to have no problems?
So for one, we do have our Mobility Access and Emergency Repair Program. Unfortunately, that is limited to a 7,500 CDBG grant. Previously, there were a handyman program, which I believe provided a, maybe, not specific on the amount, but it was some type of grant slash loan that provided an even more encompassing repairs to these homes, because the first... Because the first step that we would like to see in terms of maintaining affordable housing is keeping families in their homes. Right, that's, I think, is at least by statistically so. I think that may be a beneficial program because, again, with these federal regulations, there are a lot of red tape when it comes to the types of equipment, right? Because HUD does see equipment as kind of a red, red flag. We can't, we have to be very careful in the terms of expenditures. So if, with the substandard analysis, that includes equipment for food heating, the MAA program can supplement, for example, water repairs, mobility accesses. But when it comes terms of, you know, maybe redoing the entire roof, right? That is a very costly expenditure that we see that's always going to go up, so.
Of that 7,500 that we have a year, do we have that last year? And do we go through all of it? And if so, if we went through all of it, how quickly do we go through all of it?
We don't go through all the funds, unfortunately. We do get maybe one to three applicants per year. With this grant, we do have to check income eligibility, which requires six months of bank statements, retirements, tax incomes, verifying the title and homeownership of the home, as well as any potential liens that might be on the property. Unfortunately, again, these are all requirements that we have to, again, verify that first and foremost, they are residents of Redondo Beach, and secondly, that they meet the low and income moderate standards set by HUD.
Okay. And generally, if somebody wants, needs housing help, your department would be the one to contact. How do they reach out to you all?
They can go to our website. We have a housing tab. They can click through, there's numbers, direct numbers to all of our housing staff that they can reach out to, and they can reach out to me as well. My information is on there as well.
All right, thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, any member of the public wish to address this item? We have no speaker cards?
No speaker cards and no Zoom.
Okay, doesn't look like anybody here, nobody on Zoom?
No Zoom and no ecomments for this one.
Okay, can I get a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved? Second.
All four?
Aye.
Okay, will someone make a motion to adopt the 2025 to 2030 Consolidated Plan?
So moved?
Second.
Okay, motion to second, all four?
Aye.
Okay, is that one you have to read off? Okay. Just wanted to check. I always try to jump the gun on that. Let's see, next one, we're jumping down to Item N1, discussion and possible direction on potential for utilizing bus stop furniture and buses to generate advertising. I think this is your item, isn't it?
So it was, yeah, it was from Strategic Plan, not this last one, but the one before. After Councilmember Narrenheim and I saw a presentation at Independent Cities Association, where cities, where the advertising companies were speaking about it, but they were talking about how cities are generating revenue from advertising at these bus shelters.
Yeah, so good evening, council and mayor. This is a strategic plan objective that the council asked us to look into, and it's to assess the possibility of utilizing our transit bus stops and any other inventory we have on hand for the purpose of an advertising program. So with me tonight, we have our new transit team, who I'm very proud to introduce. We have Tyron Gunn, our Transit Manager, and Brian McGumsh, our Transit Analyst. And they're going to go ahead and take the lead on presenting to the council essentially where we're at right now with our current inventory and what our bus stops and what our buses look like, what we have to work with. They're going to walk you through what our advertising options are, and then they're going to provide a recommendation at the end. So with that, I will hand over to Ty.
Good evening, council. Good evening, Mayor Light. Counsel, everyone that's here, those that's online, those that's in-house. It's an honor, first and foremost, for us to be here, to present to you as being your new transit team for the city of Redondo Beach. So we're more than thrilled. And we also have this also in the audience, Natalie Bonilla, that's also part of the team. I'm being the Transit Manager. Brian McGumsh is our analyst, and Natalie is our assistant. So it's, it's a pleasure, first and foremost, to be here, to present to you the utilizing bus stop furniture and buses for advertisement. So tonight, what we're going to do, we're going to present to you guys and inform you of basically what we have on our agenda here, the five points that we have. My first point, current stop and fleet. So basically, what do we have here that service B-City Transit services throughout the community, our fleet? And we'll talk about the stops, and you'll see the different things that we have as far as what's current. Our FTA regulations will be covered by Brian, what we can and what we can't do based off the fundings that we have, the things that we're doing, and how we're moving in the right direction as far as with the regulations based off of FTA. The potential advertisement, the potential, what do we have there? There's potential in this whole process. So please do not look at it from a negative standpoint. There is potential, but we will talk about that as well. The implementation models, we have two options that we're looking at as far as what we can do as far as third-party versus in-house, and what our recommendations, what we recommend about doing with this project. All right, next slide, please. So here on our first slide that we have, we have Route 109, we have two routes, B-City Transit, Route 109 and Route 102. If you look on the chart to the left, you'll see that the numbers that we have, it's a total on our northbound, on the 109, and southbound, we have 139 stops that we service, right? 102 route, we have 69 total stops. Then you also have shared stops, it's a total of six. A total of 214 stops that we service throughout the city of El Segundo, Manhattan Beach, Hermosa Beach, and our very own great Redondo Beach. 214 stops. Guys, let that sink in a little bit. That's a lot, right? With this, we have 20 buses in our fleet. 12 of the buses are our CNGs, which is the picture to the left. Seven of them are our cutaways, which is the 30-foot to our right. We have one minivan that service our wave services. And what these, within these 20 buses, as of right now, we have four buses that we have to replace. That's important because by 2029, one of these buses have to be electric, based off the grants that we have. But one of those buses cannot substitute for the four buses that needs to be replaced, right? Out of the 20 buses that we have that service the fleet that we're doing as of right now. So these are the things that we have in place right now. All this that we have serving these great cities are all federally funded purchases, right? Our bus stops, our buses, all federal funded. That's very important, right? Next slide, please. So here are some type of stops that we have. As you can see, we have the different locations underneath each stop. This is in our community areas. These stops here that you see on the slides are single service stops, meaning single being that it's just our own B-City Transit stops. It's not a shared stop with Metro, it's not a shared stop with G-Trans or Torrance or anything else. These are different stops at different locations that we have. So currently, these, you see, the ones, for instance, on Carnegie and Ridge Lane, you see that there's a cement, there's like a cement pillar, that's like a bench, and then you have a trash, and then that pole where the stop sign is, that's the sign, the notification of what route it is, right? Also, in front of the park, you have another bench that's slanted back, not concrete, but also have a bench there at that location. And then on Clark, you also see another cement, non-back support bus stop here, there. So we also added to this, to the right, the picture on the right, at our Redondo Beach Transit Center, a kiosk that we have, that's a quad size, that have four sides. There's information that's provided, but we specifically identify as of right now, I want you to think about everything that we have right now. Right now, there's one side that does not have anything in it, right? So there's some, we're going to talk about that, but
Opportunity?
Maybe. Maybe. But we just wanted to show you guys that, because we only have one, there's only one kiosk that's at the Redondo Beach Transit Center, right? Next slide, please. So Brian, hand it over to Brian to talk about the FTA regulations.
Thank you, Ty. So I'll be touching on federal FTA regulations for our assets. I'm going to refer to our FT, to FTA circular F4220.1G. This applies to all FTA assistant programs, which B-City Transit is a recipient. It's to comply, one of the, one thing to note about it is it requires compliance with competitive procurement process. So what that means is we'll need to open up request for proposals, which is an equal opportunity for business, and then go into a revenue contract once signed. And then, once we sign the revenue contract, we have the, I'd like to cite Federal Grant Regulation 2 CFR Part 200. Any revenue generated from these revenue contracts is classified as program income, which is defined as gross income earned by the recipient or subrecipient that is directly generated by a supported activity or earned as a result of the federal award during the period of performance, except as provided. So that's the revenue that we're generating. The second piece of the regulation is, the general expectation is that the program income earned during the project period must be retained by the non-federal entity and in accordance with federal awarding agency. Regulations or the terms and conditions of the federal award must be used to support activities of the project or program. So what that essentially boils down to is any revenue generated from the advertising program must return into transit. As Ty mentioned, BCT assets are currently federally funded with the 80/20 split, 80% federal, 20% local match. So if the city, if the city chooses to use current assets, then we must comply with FTA guidelines. Another option, though, however, is the city can invest in bus furniture and/or assets that are non-FTA funded, making this agreement unnecessary.
The revenue that's generated, is it split 80/20 or it goes entirely to the federal?
So that's our expenses in purchasing the assets. So we do 80/20 split, so 80% is federal funds, and then 20% is local match.
The revenue generated, 100% has to stay in B-City Transit.
Right, so the, the revenue that's generated from the advertising program would need to come back into the transit.
Mayor, I'm sorry. Could we possibly use those, I'm sorry for interrupting. Could we possibly use those funds to pay for our 20% match?
That's a great question that
I would, I would add, our 20% match is generally supported with other regional transportation restricted dollars, like Prop C.
But if we didn't have them.
If we, for some reason, didn't have the local regional offset, and we were having to subsidize it with general fund dollars, then to answer your question, yes, we could.
Thank you, Mayor. And just to pick up on that point, so if the city were to remove and give back the federally-funded furniture bus stops and provide our own city-funded bus stops, and if the city were to include advertising on those bus stops, would the city be able to keep all of that revenue in the general fund if it desired?
That's correct.
That's correct.
Yeah, you're skipping into the presentation, but you're absolutely correct.
I don't want to, no, okay. This may be in it as well, and I'll ask this quickly. There's 214 stops. If the city were to go forward and do advertising, if allowed, on those stops, would that be allowed only for those stops that are within our city limits? Or could we do it for all of the stops for which the BCT services, if you know?
Don't necessarily know that right offhand, but I will say this, because of the shared stops that we have with Metro, Metro, those stops that they purchase, they are responsible for. So if there's any purchasing stops that we purchased, that we shared with Metro, then we have access to do what you're requesting, if that makes sense.
Are those shared stops within the 214 that you mentioned, or are those additional?
Yes, yes.
How many of those are shared stops, if you know offhand? And if it's in your presentation, I'll wait.
We don't know right offhand, but we'll get that answer to you, for sure.
All right, thank you, thank you, Mayor.
Will do, will do. Great question, thank you. Next slide, please. Oh, you should have some more. All right, so here are examples of our shared stops, right? So the picture to the left, we have a shelter, slanted bench, and then there's a sign with shared stops. This is one that we purchased, right? And then also in the middle, you see, in front of a business underneath a roof, considerably shelter-wise, right? Another slanted bench, metal, stop, shared stop with a Torrance Transit. And then to the right, you see that there's a bench, slanted bench, trash can, that's in front of, next to a business, in front of a parking, an open parking spot. Why this is important is because if you notice that these, these different type of settings is currently what that we have now, some of them, one has a shelter, one don't. So in order for us to be able to do these different type of advertisements and things like that, we have to build this type of infrastructure to make all this come to light. So these are the things that we have currently right now. Yes, council?
Oh, thank you. You need a shelter to do any advertising on a bus bench?
Not necessarily.
Okay, thank you.
No, you don't need a shelter to actually do. But this bench is not necessarily, we, we're not, we don't have the expertise to be able to make judgment to say yes or no on the slanted, if there's any type of advert types that can go on that bench, per se. So we, we'll talk about the third-party piece a little bit later. But nevertheless, you do see the, the different type of, these are just some of the different type of bus stops that we have currently in our services as of right now. To be able to provide different type of shelter, so your shelter itself costs roughly anywhere from about $5,000 to $15,000 for the shelter. Then for the kiosk, if we wanted to implement and add a kiosk to these places, depending on the size, depending on the advertisement, what it displayed, electricity can go anywhere from 20, 25,000 to, yeah, to like 50,000, basically, just for just one, that'd be added into our bus stops. And then also, too, for the, the cost of installation is anywhere from 1,500 to $5,000 for like installation for each stop. All right, next slide. Here, also too, so for potential advertisement, so as you can see right here at McKay in Artesia, we have a stop on our left, has a bench, like you asked, councilman, that not necessarily have a shelter, but if you notice, it's a distance away from like the other benches away that's kind of offset to the back, right? But then also too, the next, the picture on the right, you see that that's also a shared stop that has no bench, no shelter, just the sign of the location of where the bus stop is. So like I said previously, in making all this come to light, what I advertising, will have significant funds, it costs a nice piece of finances to be able to make all this, to add these certain things, because currently in our services throughout our routes, we don't have certain beginning pieces to make this come to light in our services as of right now. Next slide.
So I'm going to go ahead and talk about implementation in our different models that the city can implement. Before I get into the models, the city will need to come up with advertising policies and procedures, the content, what is going to be prohibited, what is going to be allowed? If we're only going to allow commercial content only, if so, what specific categories will be restricted, such as tobacco, alcohol, and firearms? So we'll really need to set and adopt a clear vetted policy before we're able to move forward with this. So now, put that in the back of our minds, I'll go into the two models that we have. The first one is third-party contracting with an advertising firm. So this essentially means to remain compliant with FTA. We open up an RFP bid, get into an advertising firm, get into a contract with an advertising firm, they'll manage advertising assets, the sales for advertising, installation and maintenance. This will require less upfront capital, you know, the, again, manager assets. The contractor will have specialized experience. Some risks, cons will be reduced city control, requires revenue sharing, so we're not going to get that 100% from our advertised, advertising sales, and requires strong city oversight. If we were to ever require a change to the contract, it would require contract negotiations, and we'd need staff dedicated to the oversight and management of the contractor, you know, who would run these financial audits, you know, the content management. The second model is in-house management. So that would mean transit staff running the advertising program. This would, a pro would be strong city oversight. We would retain about, retain 100% of the transit revenue, going back into the transit program, highly adaptable, city can adjust as necessary. However, a risk is significant city resources, requires staff expertise. There will be upfront capital necessary, as Ty mentioned, producing of our assets, purchase and installation of, you know, again, these bus assets. If we're using the current assets in place, we'll need to open up a competitive bidding process to stay within compliance with FTA. We'll also need to build staff expertise, someone who understands, knows ad sales, market analysis, and operations, running the operations, which is printing, placement, and maintaining advertising assets, and then the administrative portion, which is compliance monitoring, content review, and financial reporting.
Think you missed one, we need to know how to market. Get those advertisers to come in.
Right, absolutely. Excellent. So with this, so we added the picture to this, to kind of give you guys, for everyone that's visual, so you can kind of get an idea of a stop that we have. So this stop is here, is Felton in Artesia. As you can see, it has a shelter, it has a slanted bench, the trash can is next to us, has a flower bed behind. The picture is not slanted, it's on a downward grade. So we always want to make sure we're ADA compliant, right? So with that, having that, the flower bed has to be managed by the property by 7-Eleven, right? So they're responsible for the beautification of the whole advertising project, right? Where a third party will also, with their expertise, will be able to provide the other pieces to make it all come to light, which, just in this picture, it's a lot that needs to take place. Communication with the business, communication with the third party, the pros and the cons, making sure what we have already that we need to replace, and how to make sure that what the spaces that they use to put maybe a kiosk or something like that, it has to also be in compliance with the distance from the bench to the curb for ADA compliance to be able to move up and down for people down the street. So this picture, we thought was a real good visual for you guys to get an idea of the different challenges that we have at hand. Next slide. So with recommendations in closing, first and foremost, like I said, we thank you guys for taking this time and giving us the opportunity to do this, to present to you guys and get a better understanding what your transportation team is going to provide for you. With that being said, when allowing staff and colleagues conduct targeted economic research, the projected costs, very important, very important. Why so? It's important because knowing that what the challenges are with the FTA currently, right? Nothing is concrete, but with the funding marks that have been presented to us as going into our next budget year, we anticipate in a 10%, possibly a 10% cut, right? So with that, that means that our local return money, we might have to cover that gap. But in covering the gap, we already digging into finding out much grants as we can, get more money to be able to accommodate those gaps that we might face. Also too, understanding that the current contracts that we have in place, we have to be able to fulfill as well. So spending a significant amount of money to be able to make this project come to fruition could be a challenge. And also too, coming up for the new proposal that's going to be happening within the next couple of weeks. So developing an advertising, the policies.
Yeah, so again, just really reiterating, we need an advertising policy surrounding, if we were going to move forward with advertising through our bus assets. And then we have the potential to generate revenue. Santa Monica has found success in bus advertising due to its tourism and opportunities for its advertisers, advertisements, advertisers, excuse me, to reach the market. One non-revenue benefit is improvements to bus shelters and information, providing safety to our patrons. However, one of our neighboring cities has experienced challenges, quotes revenue shortfall from bus shelter advertising, which continues to be a challenge from Torrance, City of Torrance adopted operating budget and capital improvement plan.
So with that being said, as of current, we have attended some metro meetings to see about different budgets, the different grants already. Like I stated before, we also seeking to find more funding in different areas. But at this current time, we're still in the process of building our transit team, we're still, and we want to make sure that we're very accurate in giving you guys, giving the city, should I say, give the city the best possible winning attitude to be able to advertise. So we recommend at this time, it's not feasible for us to go forward with this project due to the different challenges and the infrastructure and the different things that we have amongst us. But it doesn't mean, Councilman Obaji, that we can't later on use an RFP to be able to put advertisement for someone to bid, to have that space in that column that's at the transit center. So thank you, thanks again. Do you guys have any questions, any comments?
Well, first, thank you. This was a good, good presentation and well presented. Glad to see some energy come into a topic that we don't often get a lot of energy on. Thank you for that, and thanks for the research. Councilmember Barrett.
Thank you, Mayor. I was just going to say, you know, one thing about our current bus bench design is, it is inconspicuous, so like residents don't even really know it's there. I want to hear more about advertising and the pros and cons beyond what was discussed so far. Revenue is very important to our city, we're going to hear about that in a couple of weeks. But there's something to say about the inconspicuous nature versus the advertising, where, you know, it's, by definition, it's going to be eye-catching, it's going to be bright, it's going to be, hey, call so-and-so. So.
Absolutely.
But so maybe if we do move forward with advertising, we would have to have some kind of guidelines that are, you know, work that balance. And I want to see more about that. So that was it, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Councilmember Waller. I definitely appreciate the report. Back in the old internet days, I ran an online ad network, I know, there's no way I would even come close to having the expertise to do, to manage this, and I don't see our staff being close to that yet. So I definitely agree with what you got there. The only way this could ever work would be if we went with a third-party solution. But I see the upfront cost as being pretty prohibitive. You know, if we've got projections that come in and say what the revenue is going to be, or if somebody comes in and says they want to provide the facilities, I would still have concerns with the clutter and the blight from the advertising, unless the numbers for the advertising that would come in were enough to change my mind. So at this point, I think I would agree with the receive and file, and let's get more information, and we've got it, it's good, but not ready for it yet.
Beg your counsel.
Thank you, Councilmember Obaji.
Yeah, thank you, Ryan, by the way, Tyrone and Brian, that was an excellent presentation. And I'll say, when it was presented to us at ICA, the idea was these companies come in, they'll invest in all the outdoor furniture, et cetera, and then they split the revenue with the city. With that said, to Councilmember Barron's point, if we take a look at, if you look at 2B, please, even the most beautiful outdoor advertising, is that sharing now? Yeah. Is loud, right? I mean, and, and by the way, when they presented, they said, look, to make this happen, it's going to have to be on your very busy corridor. So Artesia Boulevard, PCH, those would probably be two of the main places where you can get outdoor advertising and the like, and what other other streets are highly traversed or trafficked in other cities. I don't know that even the most beautiful of these are suitable for Redondo Beach, I'll say that. Also, I did speak today with the developers of the Grub House, and he had complained to me before about one of the, the bus furniture that you showed in one of those pictures in front of the fence. I said, hey, can you move it to the next block and the like? And we looked at it, we said, no, we can't move it to the next block. I said, but hey, we're discussing bus furniture tonight at council. Would you prefer a new bus shelter, perhaps with advertising? He said, the simpler, the better, and all caps, no advertising.
Wow.
So it's a, it's a good thing to, yeah, keep in our minds, it's maybe something we can explore if we need the revenue in the future, but as also I think about Artesia Boulevard and the billboards that are there, sometimes I wish they weren't there. And it tends to just bring the injury attorneys. So that's all, thank you guys very much.
Thank you.
Okay, Councilmember Castle.
Hi, thank you so much for the presentation, it was a lot of good information. A couple of things, just to reiterate what Councilman Obaji said, one of the concerns that I had was a lot of our routes aren't on heavy traffic streets. So in your presentation, there were, you know, in particular, the stop that was next to the park, I know that that's not a very busy street from just a car traffic standpoint, which is what you need for advertising to be successful. So I'm not sure how many of our 200-plus stops would actually be viable candidates for advertising. And then secondly, if we could just monitor Torrance and try to understand why their program isn't successful, it may be for that very issue, just in Torrance versus, for example, us versus Santa Monica, someplace like that where there's lots of traffic pretty much on every street, on all the major corridors, Torrance may have, you know, similar issues that we would have in any kind of program like this. But thank you very much, and I concur with your conclusion.
Thank you, thank you.
Okay, any member of the public wish to address the council on this item? Come on, you don't have to raise your hand.
Hello, my name is Scott Griffin. So addressing the council and the mayor on this matter, I would like to say that I personally, as a member of the public, and as a student of Redondo Union High School, that I do not like the idea of seeing advertisements at the bus stops, especially at the one that's right next to the school, because it's in the perfect place, it's right underneath the tree, the like sidewalk is a little rugged, it looks perfect, it looks natural, and it looks amazing. These advertisements, both big and small, sort of ruin the nat, they ruin the natural look that these bus stops can have. But I do agree with the idea of putting more infrastructure for the bus stops and having like shelters over them. And that is really all that I have to say for it, so thank you for listening.
Thank you. So you're a student at Redondo Union?
Yes, I'm a student at Redondo Union High School.
Okay, and you're here for extra credit or for a class?
Or just to speak? I am here for my government class.
You should get extra credit for speaking twice, so.
Enjoy the screenshot.
For speaking, I think I possibly can get like an award for it, but I don't know how I would show that off.
Well, we have a.
It's on YouTube. It's on YouTube.
Anyway, sorry, I didn't mean to.
No worries, Mr. Mayor.
We're all trying to get you extra points.
Yes. If you need a selfie, we can do a selfie.
Right.
Not right now. Okay, thank you. Anyone else wish to address the council at this time? Anyone online?
Yes. So Wayne Craig.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. This is an important topic, I think that, while I certainly apply the efforts to look at ways of increasing revenue without, I guess, costing residents money, I think in this case, having additional signs throughout the city does present a problem, because as we all know, urban areas are very subject to visual pollution. If you drive down busy streets, you're inundated with signs. I'm concerned about what would happen to Artesia Boulevard, where we're spending all this time and effort and changing our zoning to make it a showcase for the city and have it, you know, obscured with a lot of different, you know, fancy signs and some examples that Councilmember Obaji showed, while they look great, you know, it's going to take away from the businesses we're trying to showcase and promote along Artesia Boulevard and in other parts of the city. The other thing is, on some of the sites that were shown, their homes, I think one on Carnegie that I saw in the example, I don't think the residents there would love that at all. I think that would be a real big problem for them, especially if they're looking out their window and they see an ad this week for, you know, some energy drink, and the next week, it's, you know, hopefully not tobacco products or other things like that. I don't think that would be a really good thing in those applications. Now, on the topic of revenue increase, why don't we look at, I don't know, enforcing dog licensing? If you go to Veterans Park on any weekend, you'll also see dozens of dogs that are there, which are not supposed to be there. Or, God forbid, go to the pier on a weekend and there's dogs all over the place, people smoking, those, that could be some significant ticket generation. The other thing that we may want to consider is basically maybe comparing our sales tax and TOT revenue that we generated during the beach life weekend and compare that to other parts of the city, say, you know, maybe on July 4th or Riviera Village and other areas. Another tax revenue comparison might be good with the, be it the Spring Fest. We really don't know how much it costs and how much we make on it. I know for eight years, there's been public requests asking for that. Again, I think we need to look at a holistic approach and other things in the city that we could, you know, maybe get a better handle on how to raise revenue. While this sounds good, I just don't think it's really a practical application, you know, again, with the threat of sign pollution and impacting some of the neighborhoods, I don't know necessarily a great thing. Anyway, that's all I had to say, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Yes. Kyle Johnson.
Hello, Kyle.
Hi, my name is Kyle Johnson. Oh, yeah, can y'all hear me?
Yes.
Yeah, my name is Kyle Johnson, and I'm a District One resident and avid transit user. While I agree with city staff's recommendation to receive and file for now, I'm actually really excited by the possibility of advertising for the Beach Cities Transit. I would love to improve bus infrastructure, both at the stops, so, you know, more shelter bus stops, trash cans, and benches, as well as improve the frequency and hours of the buses running in order to create a virtuous cycle. I think right now, Beach Cities Transit isn't that bit of a death spiral, frankly, because, you know, it takes so long to wait for a bus to get there, and then oftentimes they're late, or something has happened, and basically no one uses the 109. I live right on it, but I never use it because I'm traveling north-south, and it's always faster to just take LA Metro 232. But I think that by improving bus infrastructure, we could create a virtuous cycle where more money is generated and more people use the bus, which leads to better infrastructure, which leads to more money, which leads to more people using the bus, and we would get a better transit system for everyone, which would be great for the environment in terms of pollution, people's health in terms of walking around, being more mobile, and just better for our community overall. Thank you.
Thank you, Kyle.
Next person is Nancy Skiba.
Hello, Nancy.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council, and all who are present. I wanted to say that I think that if they had advertising on the closed type of bus stops, that might be better and more attractive. But one thing I do think is it could possibly serve as some kind of a distraction for drivers, you know, especially if people want to slow down to look at a sign and get themselves rear-ended or some such thing like that. So I do think traffic safety is an issue with Redondo, as I'm on the Public Safety Commission, and we do look into these things. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay, so that concludes the Zoom, and we have two E comments, and one opposed, one is neutral.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Obaji?
Yeah, just follow-up question. I noticed that we don't have advertising on our buses. Is there, is there an opportunity, would that generate any significant revenue for our system? You know, like, is there space on our buses? I don't really see, they're not designed, it doesn't seem like they're designed to have advertising on them, but.
You're referring to on the outside, correct?
Yes.
It would be the same process as far as, it's possible, we actually have looked at, looked into that as well, but that's also a, because it's all, the buses are all part of the FTA general fund, so it's the same process that's going through for the RFP, so on and so forth, and then the policies that have to be in place, but that is an option.
Now, is that, is that something that seems more viable to generate more, you know, more additional transportation revenue, because it's not permanent, it's not in our interfaces, but could help supplement what we're losing out in terms of any funding to the Beach Cities Transit?
Very well, might be, but we'll need to look into how, you know, other agencies such as Santa Monica, and what the revenues look like in their bus wrappings, so we could get back to you on that.
But also, I guess, the extent to which our buses are seen, maybe they're seeing less than others and therefore would generate less dollars, right? So.
Yeah, and what we have to keep in mind, all the legwork still needs to be done. So then the infrastructure at the bus stops, the RFP, the policymaking.
Right.
Getting a third party on board, and making sure that we're staying on top of the third part, like, that still has to be done, even though it's just the buses. So we might not actually be in the black on that one.
Got it.
And then the revenue would have to stay in the bus system, it wouldn't really come to us.
That's correct.
All right. Okay, thank you.
I move that we receive and file.
No, this is. No, this is adopt the 23rd, 2025 to 20, oh, I'm sorry, I'm back on the other. Yeah, receiving files is the correct thing.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion of second, all four.
Aye.
All right, thank you.
Anybody opposed? Okay. Thank you. Well done.
Thank you.
Okay, now jumping to what was L2 is now N2, the public hearing. It's not a public hearing, but to talk about the urgency ordinance imposing a moratorium on smoke shops. The floor is yours, Mark. I can't agree with that. Here's a pile.
You want to go with? Oh, okay.
All right, well, thank you, Mayor and City Council. The last presentation is going to be tough to follow, but I'll give it a try. At least this one will be short. So what's before you is a urgency ordinance imposing a moratorium on smoke shops. As you may recall, on April 15th, the City Council reviewed a draft ordinance, a permanent ordinance that would more effectively regulate smoke shops. That's still being worked on. However, at that meeting, the council directed staff to return with an urgency ordinance that will place a moratorium on any new ones while we're working through the permanent ordinance. This ordinance would take effect immediately. It requires a four-fifths vote from the City Council, and it also must be supported by findings related to public health, safety and welfare. So just highlighting those findings really quickly, the in the ordinance, it documents some of the state and local issues with the legal tobacco product sales. We had some recent incidences in Redondo Beach, and those were presented at the last meeting. There's also statewide issues as well. The findings also note, um, federal studies identifying that tobacco products pose a unique risk to youth and a high risk. And there's also recent state legislation strengthening tobacco oversight, and it's really deemed essential by the state to lowering, um, youth tobacco use. So that was, those, that was the basis. Those were the findings and justification for this urgency ordinance.
If you don't mind an interruption, can we expand one to say, uh, non-tobacco, too? Haven't we had issues with non-tobacco products being sold out of?
You mean synthetic?
Synthetic and other.
So the ordinance, and I can bring it up in a moment.
I'm just asking if we can add that to the finding.
We, we could. The ordinance does note illegal products. But I think it says illegal tobacco products, so if you mean things outside of that.
The ordinance carries the findings.
It does, yes, in the recitals.
And it's, and it's working off some of the.
Never mind, keep going.
Yeah.
Yeah, and it's working off of, um, some state legislation, some of the findings that were used for different bills that went through recently.
Thanks.
So the, um, as I stated earlier, the moratorium would go into effect immediately. The initial moratorium would be for a period of 45 days, so that would end on June 20th. I do anticipate that we're going to have to come back to the City Council prior to that date to extend this for an additional 10 months and 15 days. The reason being is that the permanent ordinance has to go to the Planning Commission prior to being returned to the City Council. That's going to occur in June. So this will probably come back to the City Council mid to late summer to consider adopting the ordinance. So for the next meeting, um, when we extend this, assuming that that occurs, it will be a public hearing, and we will be doing full noticing for that meeting. And finally, staff's recommendation is to adopt the ordinance imposing the moratorium. And with that, I'm available for questions.
Okay, that was pretty straightforward. Anyone from the council? Oh, Councilmember Kala Jerovic.
Yes, thank you for coming back so quickly with this. Much appreciated. This is for smoke shops as defined in our code. Is that right? Before you, you had presented information that they had to sell more than a certain percentage of square feet of product.
Yeah, it's a good question. So we don't have a definition of smoke shop in our code. We are proposing one in the draft ordinance. That's where it lays out the percentages. There is a general definition that's used, a standard definition according to the, um, North American Industrial Classification System that defines it, so we would refer to that.
Okay. I guess the reason I ask is that this isn't limiting tobacco retail licenses, per se, right?
It is not. It would be solely smoke shops, and that's where the primary use is to sell tobacco products.
Okay. So I foresee another discussion about something else, but I know that's not agendized. So, um, I appreciate this, and I look forward to the enforcement on it.
Looks like no other council has, can we use?
Motion approved by four, thank you, Director Weiner, for this. And yeah, like Councilmember Kala Jerovic said, we're coming back so quickly with it.
And I want to thank Cheryl also. She was a big help on the urgency ordinance.
Thank you, Ms. Park. All right, so motion to approve by four fifths vote, uh, the interim urgency ordinance. Interim urgency ordinance imposing moratorium on smoke shops pursuant to government code section 65858 and adopt the findings. I guess, oh, uh, ordinance number 3294-25.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion.
By title only.
We have a motion of second. Anyone from the public wish to address this item?
Good evening, everyone. Jonathan Swardko. In 2018, the cannabis industry started before it became the mess that we have here today. And towards the end of that first year, there was the federal farm bill that had passed, which had opened up this massive loophole with the hemp products that we've been discussing here, in large part with what this ordinance is. 2019, I had the opportunity to host a series of workshops with the South Bay Cog as we discussed responsible regulations, and this became a big topic. So much so that the city of Hermosa Beach had issued out a notice to all of its retailers to cease selling any of these products. The previous council here in Redondo Beach was good enough to send letters because there was a bill at the state level by Assemblymember Aguirre Curry, who had tried to introduce a bill to full-on allow every one of these products to be sold without any testing, regulations, taxation, you name it. And I somehow found myself in the middle of being of all that rigor because the US Hemp Roundtable was sponsoring a lot of this legislation, pushing it down into California here. And I happened to be the first and only opposition to the bill. That bill, that opposition grew to where, as I mentioned, the City Council here helped support against, and fight against that stuff. We had the various other cities right here. We had the ICA send out letters as well, too. Got the County of Los Angeles involved over the years. That bill thankfully died that first year. Came back a second year. And in that time, it was a horrible bill to where I remember getting into an argument with the Director of the Department of Cannabis Control, who had absolutely no knowledge of what it meant to have intoxicating cannabinoids coming from hemp plants. And that argument turned out to where we started having conversations about why we need age gating, as we do similarly with tobacco products, with cannabis products, all that going forward, to where the Newsom administration came back and made negotiations and said, "We would not put in an age gate for these products, but instead, we were going to ban all consumable hemp products at least until they're taxed." And for the most part, that's been the law of the land. The bill came back a third time, and we had such a big divide and fight up in Sacramento where that stuff, and it ultimately died. I'm happy here tonight to see that our city has taken this position. I'm happy to report that Assemblymember Aguirre Curry has gotten off of that to where she is now completely flipped and is pushing a bill towards regulating these products better. Still have a long way to go, but our sincere thanks for what you guys have done here for our city and being responsible for this. Thank you so much for this effort here tonight. I will definitely be supporting this. I look forward to the ordinance, and if I can be a further resource, please feel free to ask. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public wish to address the council on this item? Anyone online?
I have no one on Zoom. I have, uh, 16 E comments that I'll support.
Okay. Thank you. So with that, we have a motion to approve with a four fifths vote. I will do a roll call vote. Councilmember Waller?
Aye.
Councilmember Castle?
Yes.
Councilmember Kala Jerovic?
Oh, yes.
Councilmember Obaji?
Yes.
Councilmember Barrett?
Aye.
So the motion carries by all. Thank you.
Just before I read the ordinance, who is the second? Thank you. Okay, adopt by four fifths vote and title only urgency ordinance number 3294-25 and interim urgency ordinance of the City of Redondo, the City Council of the City of Redondo Beach, California, imposing a moratorium of development of smoke shops in the city and declaring the urgency thereof. Thank you.
Okay, so it's a milestone. Appreciate staff going so quickly through that. With that, it's, the court is yours, City Manager items?
Just, just one this evening, Mayor and Council. We had our strategic planning session, as you all know, last, last Tuesday. Thank you all for your, you might have already forgotten. Thank you all for your attendance there. Lot of, lot of good work, lot of good questions, um, a lot of good suggestions. And we'll be bringing back, uh, the more broadly described objectives that were identified and goals at, I, I now think at your June 3rd City Council meeting for consideration and discussion. We've got a little bit on the May 20th agenda that's stacking up. And given the gravity of, of getting that budget out to you next week, I think we're going to need a little more time to edit that draft document. So, uh, just for your calendaring, I think we'll be contemplating strategic plan, objective and revised goal approval on June 3rd, uh, rather than May 20th. We are meeting with Jane Harrington, uh, in the next couple of days to debrief, uh, with more, more specificity and then move forward with the revised document for you. So that was my one update. Otherwise, we've got a Tuesday council meeting next week that will be largely closed session with some open session items. And then, uh, on May 20th, you will receive and file, uh, for initial discussion, although it will be agendized hearing, uh, the 25, 26 proposed budget, uh, along with a few, uh, other actions, uh, that are scheduled to be before you. So two meetings this month. We'll have one Tuesday off, and then we'll be back at it June 3rd.
Okay, thank you. Okay, now, uh, jumping to Mayor and Council items, item P1. Uh, this is where we appoint delegates and alternates. Just as a, a heads up, there was a blue folder item on this. I asked the, uh, city clerk to extend the, the timing from May 6, 2025. On here, it says to, uh, June 30th, 2025. The only thing that would change in that time is when we pick the new mayor pro tem, which is coming up. So I asked her to extend it to June 30th, 2026, and that's in the blue folder. Uh, I also made a cut at, uh, I, this is something you guys get to pick, right? This isn't something where I appoint, but I did take a cut at it. And, uh, what you see before you now is, it's in the blue folder, is a spreadsheet of my recommendations just based, um, on different conversations. Uh, the yellow represents, um, uh, positions that were vacated by outgoing council members. The kind of orange-ish, dull orange, are changes to, uh, existing positions to move people around. And then the blue is where it's pretty perfunctory. It's the mayor and the mayor pro tem. So with that, I'll open it up to you guys to debate.
And I have it on the screen, so.
I'm sorry?
I have it on the screen.
Yes, thank you.
Okay.
Okay, Councilmember Obaji.
So first off the bat, uh, thank you, Mayor, for taking a shot at this. Appreciate it. It saves us a lot of work. It's something we can work off of. For the South Bay Council of Governments, they have a rule where any number of people can be the, the alternate. So what I'd like to do is have every member of the council and the mayor be the alternate on the cog. Because at times, for example, Councilmember Barrett, um, recuses himself from metro i-issues, uh, and sometimes neither of us could make it to a meeting that's important. So it'd be good for any of the four of you to be able to make it. So can you add?
That's the policy, yeah.
Yeah, that is the policy.
As long as all of you aren't there at once.
Right. And more than one could always attend, but.
That includes the mayor?
Yes, the mayor, too, please.
I'll put it in order right now, just.
I will say, on the education subcommittee, I have, I think you're a wonderful and a super nice guy, Mr. Councilmember Waller, and I almost think you're too nice for this role. Because, um, we're at a, we're at a critical time right now where I've re, you know, we were just, just to give you some background, a month or two ago, we had a four fifths decision come to us to appropriate about $30,000, I think, for two more crossing guards, one on Artesia Boulevard and one on Inglewood and, um, and Grant Avenue. And we couldn't get the four fifths vote on that because we're already spending $550,000 on crossing guards and getting no contributions from any of the schools, private schools or public schools, uh, with regard to crossing guards, uh, there. Also, the school district love them. They're great folks on the board, great superintendent, but this is just from my vantage point, not being on the subcommittee. What I see is we've charged the same amount, 100, you know, we've, we've collected at the same amount, $100,000 for about $400,000 that we pay for two student resource officers. Uh, as we talk about the grant, the, the Athens contract coming up, we pay for the school district's, uh, costs on the, on trap, for trash. When we talk about elections, we, we conduct an election every two years for the school district. I checked with the clerk. There's no invoice by the city to the school district to reimburse this proportion of that. On the flip side, every single thing that the school district has asked for, removing without compensation from the charter, um, not keeping them in the charter, not taking them out so that they don't end up going to, um, multi-district, uh, uh, elections, right? Where they have to elect somebody from every, every district. We've honored and we've abided by and heeded their request. So, um, and during the candidate forum, when, when we discussed it, you were the one person who said, "I'm not sure that the school district should, should, um, be, you know, paying the city or reimbursing the city any portion of the crossing guards." So with that said, I'd be more comfortable with somebody who's more aligned with my viewpoint that we're partners with the school district, and there needs to be, um, a share in some of our joint expenses or the expenses that we advance for them, be it, um, perhaps Councilmember Barrett. Because previously, we had Councilmember Lowenstein, a former school board member, on, on this subcommittee, and we still don't have any, any hard results to show for the work of that subcommittee.
Well, in defense of the subcommittee.
And I don't have two crossing guards in my district.
I just want to say that you're very educated as to the contributions that the city makes to the district. And the other conversation that the subcommittee is in is the contributions the district makes to the city, which you have not been privy to. So, understanding that, you know, you want to dig into that, I think having someone, you know, whether you, to enlighten you or you can participate, you know?
I can get updates from the mayor, the city manager.
I don't know that that's been happening because it seems like you haven't been.
It has, that has not been happening, so I have requested the updates now, um, after those meetings. And they can tell me what, you know, they can tell me what the school district folks said, uh, and I've been updated on that. But then they won't tell me what you all said, since we're not brand act. But I've already, you know, I'm a cog. I have three meetings a month that I attend. Transportation Subcommittee, Steering Committee and, and the board, board meeting. So I'm, I'm pretty spread thin. And frankly, we should get everybody an opportunity to participate here.
I would love, I don't want to get into the crossing guards, but it's, it's hard to ask them to contribute to something that they have no control over when we make policies to add or remove or move, like, how would we ask them to be part of that?
Sure, but, but elections, they have the opportunity to contribute for that. Uh, trash, how about, how about the SROs? They've been, we have.
We're getting out of scope of the topic.
Okay, okay.
So we got it. You want someone else. You would prefer someone else.
I prefer. I mean, I'll vote, I'll vote for, for Councilmember Waller to be there, and I'll just.
He's amazing and everything, just like the school.
I'll continue to make the ignorant statements I make in public because I'm not privy to the conversations that are occurring there, unless somebody updates me.
Let the record acknowledge.
Yeah, I take no offense.
Let the record reflect there's a lack of communication.
I, I would say that, um.
Let's get back to raising our hands, but go ahead.
What makes me valuable is that I do have that school board experience. I've been on the other side, um, and I know what the school, how they work. I know the people, I know the personalities. I got my City Council hat on, so I've got no problem standing up.
I got my city council hat on, so I've got no problem standing up for the city.
Okay. Anyone else?
Do we want to go item by item?
Yeah, I was gonna say, how do we do this?
I say that's probably the most efficient.
Okay. Well, let's go with the first one. Anyone have comments on the? Anyone have any comments on the first line, the Independent Cities Association?
I'm happy to serve as the representative for that.
And I'm fine as the alternate.
Agreed.
Okay, so do you guys want to vote on that?
Or do you, or can we just vote at the end?
Okay, so we'll go line by line and then, okay. League of California Cities, I combined these. It's up, you guys could separate them, but it's a fine line between the two, so. Any discussion there?
Scott has stepped into that role really well, and I think he carries it for the city.
And you're okay with being the alternate?
Yeah.
Okay, the next two, we don't have really a say in. That's prescribed, prescribed. The SB cog.
Good as is.
We just, we just altered that one. We're saying as our primary, who is already the primary and everybody else is an alternate.
Sounds good.
Any discussion there? Okay, the SCAG. Chadwick and Brad there, any discussion? You both volunteer for that?
Sure.
Any discussion?
I'll come you guys.
Thank you for taking that over. I didn't know that I was, I didn't know that I was in that role even, so.
We never got a report from you.
Okay, West Basin Water Association. I had Brad and Zane years remaining as the alternate there.
I'm alright with that.
Okay, Clean Power Alliance. Oh, somehow I left one blank, so you guys will have to duke it out.
I'm okay being the primary on that.
Okay, anybody want to be backup? We need somebody.
Chadwick. I nominate.
Okay, Chad.
That's what I was looking at.
You gotta speak up. Okay, Mary Drummer's not up right now. Well, I guess she is, but I don't see any reason to replace her. South Bay Aerospace Alliance. This is one just through different conversations, a number of people wanted. I don't think there's a limit to who can, who else can attend. But Paige, I know you want to, you're doing a good job there and I recommend you remain. And then Chad, I think you wanted to be on it, but we can add whomever we want. We just got to make sure we don't have
Quorum, yeah.
Three, a quorum out of those.
And I will say that they have, you know, they have their general board meetings and then they have focused housing meetings. So if we want, if there's others that want to jump in for some of those, we can, you know, just coordinate so that we don't have a quorum.
I guess if you're interested, add your name now and then Paige will know to coordinate. Anybody else interested?
I'm interested, but I've got enough of this stuff. I'm good.
So you don't want to?
Oh, oh, well, I guess you could put my name there and for the right.
Okay, can you add?
Sub thing.
You might show up.
Yeah.
Okay, education subcommittee. We just talked about that, Paige and Brad, and I want to be, when I can make it, I don't add to the quorum there. I don't think there's any restriction to three of us participating. In fact, I've been particip, I participated in one so far.
Yeah, but Todd wasn't there.
That's true. That's true. So does that, somebody else want to be on there? I mean, Scott, do you want to? Saying, do you want to recommend somebody else?
I, I did. Well, I mean, I'm, I'm fine. I'm fine with that. As long as Councilmember Waller is committing that he's gonna be a staunch advocate for the city, getting its fair share, some fair share, some contribution from our wonderful partners. Then I'm good with that.
Okay, any other discussion on that one? Okay, the next one, economic development. That's the new committee being put together by the city manager. He asked us for a subcommittee from the discussion we had last time. I thought I took away, you know, one from each, one from North Redondo, one from South Redondo. And I thought there was an agreement amongst the North Redondo folks that'd be Scott. Is there any? I know Paige, you might have been interested in this. Are you okay with that?
No, I, I am.
And Scott, you're okay with being nominated there?
Yeah, unless, you know, Paige I know was kind of the brainchild of hers, so.
Well, I mean, I think.
You guys want to duke it out?
We divide and conquer and it comes back for discussion here and there's opportunity there, so I'd be happy to have you on the.
Okay, well, if it's good with Paige, it's good with me.
I know. I don't know. We could wrestle. We could arm wrestle.
I don't want to lose. Okay.
And I think the same goes for the South is, you know, I, I, I wanted this as well, but it'll come back. I trust Chad.
Eleanor, we can, we'll jester arm wrestling.
Okay, so going down to the other boards and agencies, there's only one that's really up right now. It's the Public Financing Authority. That's with one bond with the Kincaid's.
I don't know. I know it's one, at least.
Yeah, it's one, some financing vehicle with Kincaid's. We've never exercised it since I've been on. So I think this was actually blank, but I put my name in there just for consistency with the other ones. I don't mind giving that up. It would just mean if it comes up, whomever that is would take over as chairman, you know, in the meeting when that happens.
I mean, I'm happy to have you continue with the agenda, leading it, just for consistency. But I'm open to other suggestions as well.
Okay. And then Mayor Pro Tem, that's not up right now. We'll vote on that when it comes up. And then Audit Committee, there was an opening there for one council member and.
I'm happy to give up my spot on the Audit Committee if somebody wants to be on it.
Okay, well, I did, I put Chad on there because of his background in the
Budget and Finance Commission, so.
Anybody else want to take Zane?
Any itching to be on Audit Committee?
I'm happy to let Zane continue.
It's like the Budget and Finance.
I guess I deserve that.
Okay, I think we covered everything. You guys want to make a, a motion?
I'm moving to approve. Second.
Okay, this is adopting resolution CC 2505-024.
As amended on the screen here.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second. Anyone from the public wish to address this item? Anybody online?
I have none for, that's what I was checking to see for.
Now we get to see what you look at.
No Zoom, and let me see. And? No ecomments.
Okay, so I'll call the vote. All four?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Okay, I think you read this one off, don't you?
adopted resolution CC-2505-024, reserved city council, city of Redondo Beach, California, many resolution number CC-2406-053 by appointing delegates and alternates as official representatives of the city for a term commencing May 6, 2025 and expiring on June 30, 2025 as amended. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, going to item P2, discussions and just in consideration of my appointments to the various commissions, there were two openings. One was on the Planning Commission and one was on the Budget and Finance Commission that was, happened when Councilmember Castle got elected. The one for the Budget and Finance Commission should rightfully go to District 3, but nobody applied from District 3. So I recommend, my recommendation came from somebody who really advocated for it when I was walking, wanted to, wanted to serve the community. He's a professor in economics. So he's well versed in this and he wanted to give back to the community. It sounded like a perfect fit. So that's my recommendation there. On the Planning Commission, I had two candidates. Jewel, I interviewed both of them. I think Julie is better qualified. She also indicated a desire to run for office in the future. And I feel this is a good commission to get your feet wet and start to understand what's going on in the city. She's from District 4, which is the position we're replacing, so it's a District 4 for District 4. So I would ask you to consider my appointment.
Thank, thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Mayor, for your diligence and, and speaking to two different District 4 residents about the appointment to the Planning Commission, which is a very important quasi judicial body here in the city. Julie Young is very involved with Little League, with Girl Scouts, you name it. She knows everybody. She's been a store manager for the Little League clubhouse at Perry Park. So it's gonna be great to have her. And yeah, she's interested in succeeding me here in District 4. And so it'd be great to see, see her warm up to the system and, and learn the ropes.
Okay, anyone else? Can I get a motion?
To approve mayor's recommendations for commissions.
I'll second.
Okay, a motion and a second. Anyone from the public wish to address this item? Okay, anyone online?
I have no Zoom or ecomments related to this item.
Okay, all four?
Aye.
Anyone against? Okay, thank you. Appreciate you guys backing my, my selections. I would say you all need to get out and start recruiting in October. We're gonna have a number of openings and I'll get that list out to you next week so you know what's coming up and what districts are coming uncovered, so.
I'll send you a link, all of you, regarding the app, so that way you can just send it right forward to your constituents.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. So with that, we're jumping down to mayor and council referrals to staff. Councilmember Waller?
Yes, I have, let me open that up. I'd like to BRR to add an additional staff member to supplement our economic development activities.
I think I know the answer to that one. Anything else?
No.
Okay, Councilmember Castle?
Nothing.
Councilmember Kala Jerovic?
I would like to potentially tie in a discussion when the ordinance for smoke shops come back to include how to regulate tobacco retail licenses. In addition, it's kind of outside and, I mean, we're going through this whole process. It seems like we should close some loopholes.
That's, yeah, we can certainly bring that back as part of discussion. It's a much bigger number and issue. It affects grocery stores and other things.
Yeah, and I, again, it can be a discussion.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Councilmember Obaji?
Just to BRR, please, on dress uniforms.
For the council?
For the firefighters. On, on formal wear for the firefighters, a BRR. Dress, 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 like they don't have anything that they can dress up to go to a ball or whatever it may be. And so, and whether, whether the chief would recommend that or not.
Do those exist?
I guess they do exist, but I guess only like the chief, division chiefs, et cetera, get them.
It's usually them and not the police.
I think the police have their uniforms just add a tie to them, right?
Can you also see them when we discuss this?
Just a BRR.
What do they look like?
Just a BRR. Look, I, I asked a firefighter unnamed, what do you guys want? New station? Okay, something else this budget? It was during that celebration of them saving that, that home, right? He goes, maybe dress uniforms, you know, because we just, we don't have any. And I was like, alright, I'll ask for the cost. That's all I can promise.
I think the council should get dressing.
We can wear robes like. Oh my gosh.
Okay, anything else, Councilmember? Councilmember Barrett?
I have nothing. I did have a question for the city attorney. Do we need a vote on the referral?
Yeah, it's, unless there's, yeah. Usually you take a vote for a referral on discussion.
Second.
Thanks for catching that.
I did whisper it.
Okay, a motion and a second. All four?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. And I have none. So with that, we're not going to recess to, recess to closed session, but we've got all that done. So can I, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion and a second, all four?
Aye.
Okay, thank you. Productive evening, gentlemen.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Eleanor.